I invite everyone to join me for the pledge.
(inaudible)
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 Alright, the first order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from the November 5th meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review those?
(inaudible) Move approval of the minutes.
(inaudible)
On favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a very exciting night, obviously, by all in attendance, to have the swearing in of firefighter Corey Pramus.
I'd like to recognize also Ian McAllister graduated from the Fire Academy three weeks ago, and today firefighter Nick Matone graduated from the Fire Academy.
Great.
Lot of new personnel on the department.
Excellent.
So Corey Pramus was hired November 13th, 2017. He went to the Fire Academy on March 29th, 2017, and graduated from the Massachusetts Fire Academy June 15th, 2017. Corey's lieutenant, in his final evaluation of Corey, and Corey's lieutenant Lieutenant Nuzbaum is here tonight, said Corey's first year has been exceptional. He came in with positive attitude and a willingness to learn. He took the same attitude to the Mass Fire Academy where he excelled and finished near the top of his class. He is a hard worker and very confident in his skills. He also understands that he's part of a team and always steps up when anything needs to get done. I'm sure he will have a very successful career in the North Andover Fire Department, Lieutenant Nuzbaum. Referencing that, Corey always does step up. Today Corey worked an extra shift, and he spent that shift assisting in training of our newest recruit who started five weeks ago. So Corey's taking what he learned from the firefighters that helped him, and he's already helping to assist the new firefighters coming in the door. Corey also has a degree in occupational therapy from Worcester State, and he is currently enrolled in the Fire Protection and Safety Technology Program. So he's taken his career very seriously, and he's learning to move that in the direction of fire science. Corey's going to be getting badge nine tonight, and I want to thank John McGuire, retired deputy fire chief. John is our department's historian, and he always does the research of badges that were worn before firefighters that came before us. So badge nine. Philip T. Miller was the first firefighter to be issued badge nine. Firefighter Miller wore badge nine from 1955 to 1996 when he retired. Charles Shea was the next firefighter to wear badge nine. Firefighter Shea wore badge nine from 1976 to 1989 when he was promoted to fire lieutenant. Lieutenant Shea retired in 1998. Richard Brown was the next to wear badge nine. Firefighter Brown wore badge nine from 1989 to 1993 when he transferred to the Braintree Fire Department. Firefighter Brown was promoted to fire lieutenant on the Braintree Fire Department in 2016. Robert Kilcoyne Jr. was the next firefighter to wear badge nine. Firefighter Kilcoyne wore badge nine from 1994 to 2004 when he was promoted to fire lieutenant. Matt J. LaCola was the next to wear badge nine. Firefighter LaCola wore badge nine from 2015 to 2016 when he was promoted to fire lieutenant. Corey Pramus is the next firefighter to wear badge nine. Firefighter Pramus is the son of former North Andover firefighter John Pramus, now a Haverhill firefighter, and nephew to the fire chief William McCarthy. So placing the badge on Corey will be Corey's mother, Karen Pramus. Joyce, we're going to do the badge first, or you want to do the swearing in first?
Okay. This is my favorite part of John. Welcome you as a new town of William. If you don't mind raising your hand and repeating after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Corey Pramus.
Solemnly promise and affirm.
Solemnly promise and affirm.
That I will honestly.
Bow honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Sincerely.
Sincerely.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
That are incumbent upon me.
That are incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
For the town of North Andover.
For the town of North Andover.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Just have you sign the book right there for me.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
(inaudible)
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 Quickly, I'll just say thank you to everyone in the room tonight, down at North Andover, for giving this opportunity, take it very seriously, and I'm very proud to be a part of this. Thank you very much.
Great, congratulations.
(applause)
Well, again, I want to thank you again for having us. This is very special to us. We appreciate you guys always having us to do this, and we'll be seeing you shortly with our next recruit, but thank you. Have a good night, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
(inaudible)
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 Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, really.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
(inaudible)
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 Had I missed that?
That's actually probably a good call though, tell.
We'll focus on that first.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It's a pretty neat tradition.
Yeah, it is. Nice.
Don't do that in our industry.
That's right.
Good evening.
Right. Before we move to the next item on our agenda, acceptance of donations, I want to first open it up to public comment. We forgot to put that on our agenda, but we have been doing that traditionally at the beginning of the meetings, so I'll open it now. Mr. Limper?
Stan Lindberg, 43 Stone Creek Road, and a trustee of the Stevens Memorial Library. I just wanted to come before you tonight to thank you for the support the library has gotten over the years, but most recently with the gas crisis, and to just single out at least one person on the town staff. Steve Foster, who's done our facilities manager, who's just done an excellent job in helping us get some interim solutions to the heat problems, and now get our heat and hot water back in the building, and we really appreciate everything he and actually the Columbia Gas and the subcontractors did to get us back online. We really appreciate it, and it's just made the library what you always know it's all about, that welcome both adults and children to our library. The other person I wanted to thank on behalf of the trustees is Kathy Darby, who has now taken on a new role and is no longer our interface here at Town Hall. She was a strong advocate and supporter, and helped us out a great deal for the library, but we're looking forward to working with Ms. Casey here, and we're sure that relationship is going to go just as well. So I wanted to thank both of them for all the support they've given the public library. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Moving on, the next item is acceptance of donations. So I think we have two donations that we will recognize tonight, both from Eagle Scout Projects, and I know Rick Green is here, I mean, sorry, Rick. Rick Gorman, thank you, too many Ricks in my head, is here from the Youth and Research Services Department to say a few words about what these fine gentlemen have offered.
Great, thanks for having us. As we've talked before, we had a very successful year at Stevens Pond, and I want to introduce Kelly Ray, who's been our director for a number of years down there. I don't know if all of you have met her before, but she worked closely with two Eagle Scouts to do two great projects down at the pond this year that is going to make things better for us down there. She's going to talk a little bit about the projects and introduce the fine young men who actually finished the projects this summer. Kelly?
Thank you. So this summer, these two young men, James and Sam, they were looking for opportunities for their Eagle Scout project, and we had some ideas down at the pond. James Keaton decided to take on a project for our gate attendants. They previously sat at a folding table in the parking lot under a pretty weak umbrella to check permits of residents coming through, so I remember I sent him a picture of a lemonade stand that I found on Google and said, "This is something that could benefit our gate attendant," and he took it to a whole new level. He built them a beautiful hut that provides them with shade. They started using it immediately. It looks far more professional, and it actually allowed us to start selling a few snacks this summer, too. Sam took on a different project for us. We were fortunate enough to get some boats from the Joseph Herman Incorporated this summer. The only thing missing was a place to store them, so Sam built us two beautiful boat racks that allow us to store them in between use in the summer, as well as store them in the winter to prevent them from getting ruined by all the snowfall. Both boys had to do a lengthy and detailed proposal. They had to raise their own money and find their own materials and collect the volunteers, which they did from their troop and their families. Once they did all those steps, the projects were done within one day, but they are two projects that will live on at the pond and is a reminder for me every year of their hard work, and it should be to them as well. So we want to thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, guys. As a parent of young children, I spend a lot of time at Stevens Pond, and I've seen firsthand these really great projects that I definitely agree have been a great benefit to the town and everyone who uses the pond. So we have some certificates of recognition for you guys tonight, so if you want to come on up, I'll just read these. So this one is Certificate of Recognition Presented to James Keaton. In recognition of completing your Eagle Scout project by designing and constructing a gate attendant shelter and donating it to the town for the use at Stevens Pond. Your leadership, dedication, and hard work in making this improvement to Stevens Pond are greatly appreciated. We thank you for your community service on behalf of the town of North Andover, presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, November 19th. And I'll just read the next one. This is a certificate of recognition presented to Sam Mountain. In recognition of completing your Eagle Scout project by designing and constructing two boat racks and donating them to the town for use at Stevens Pond. Your leadership, dedication, and hard work in making this improvement to Stevens Pond are greatly appreciated, and we thank you for your community service on behalf of the town of North Andover, presented by the North Andover Board of Selectmen, November 19th, 2018. Thank you, guys, very much for your service.
(applause)
Thank you.
Madam Chair, pose for a quick photo, and then we have to decide if we're going to actually accept the donation. (laughing)
Since it already got chips on it inside of it.
Yeah.
Great.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donation from Sam Mountain, two boat racks to be used at Stevens Pond.
My second up.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move that the Board of Selectmen accept the donations from James Keaton of a gate attendant shelter to be used at Stevens Pond.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Alright, this motion's passed unanimously. Thank you again, gentlemen, for your service.
Thanks, guys.
Next on our agenda is licensing.
Okay. Make a motion to move the licensing.
Second.
On favor? Aye.
Okay, we're in licensing. First is, we have a request from Sedexo of Merrimack College for a mobile food truck license. Is there anybody here from Merrimack to speak to this?
Good evening, everybody. Jeff Doggett, Executive Vice President of Merrimack College and a resident of 84 Johnson Street here in the town. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity for this petition. The food truck is a unique opportunity for the college as we continue to grow, try to provide different ways to provide food service to the students. One of the things that we're bumping up against is that everyone changes so quickly, and so what our hope was with the food truck was to provide various venues throughout the campus on different days, so it might be Taco Tuesday, and it may be, you know, Chinese food on Wednesday. The food truck itself, unlike what you would normally see on a street, which is really particular to a type, this is really more of a mobile kitchen. And in fact, some of the changes or some of the additions in the food truck themselves were part of the process, working with the town, which we were very appreciative of, some things we hadn't thought about ourselves, that the town was helpful in guiding us in that direction. So I'm here on behalf of the college to thank the town, the town manager, and the various offices that worked with us on reaching this point, and ask for your support.
So is the truck going to be just on campus?
Correct.
Just on Merrimack campus?
Yeah, we did get a Hawker Pedler license, but the goal here is to keep it on the campus. Our actual step to take that additional one was, one, was just making sure we made we had all the permitting, made sure we went through all the processes. I could see a scenario where, for example, the town may ask us to come and do a particular event, and we'd want to be able to do that without having to jump through a lot of other hoops, but our goal here is not to provide a service off the campus. As a matter of fact, most of the use is going to be card swipe. It won't be generating money, like it won't be cash tendered back and forth. It'll be just card swipes as if you were in the dormitory.
Well, I have to say with a child that just came home from college, his first experience there, variety certainly helps. You know, everybody's kind of got their meal plan. I think that's a great idea, and I've seen it in other schools. And I think as long as you've got a process to make sure it's secure and properly staffed, I think it's a great addition to the school.
Thank you very much. We're very happy about it. I can't wait to get it going.
Plus, you have a lot more students on the campus than ever before, right?
We do, we do. Yeah, we're very fortunate to be an institution that's attracting students, so there are a lot of other institutions in higher education that are not as successful as we've been over the past several years.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Sedexo at Merrimack College for a mobile food truck license.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say one thing because you're here? It's a totally different matter, but just the other day, some of the kids are still crossing the street in the dark, not at the light. So maybe...
Yeah, we had some officers out the other night.
Okay.
Catching them along the way. Yeah, they're definitely feeling a little bit more brazen, especially when the traffic has stopped. They just try to take it from all angles, so we've been stopping them along the way and making sure that they don't continue to do that.
Because it's in the dark with dark clothes. And I've seen it a couple of times. So because you're here, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I just take advantage of reminding you and people driving up that road, still don't just rely on the lights, because kids are kids.
Thank you very much. No, I always appreciate the opportunity to talk about safety when it comes to that road or anything like that, when it comes to our students and faculty staff, so thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we take item D out of order while Mr. Doggett's at the podium. Maybe we can talk about those items.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so item D is the one day, the nine one-day licenses, and I know there's been some discussion.
That's correct.
With town council, and so maybe you could kind of give the board a little perspective as to what's going on, how that's progressing.
Yeah, sure. So having some conversations with the town manager, we've been working to try to figure out a way to reduce the number of one-day licenses. We know that's a burden on the town, and try to find a way to reconfigure some of the event spaces that we have on the campus and consolidate them in certain locations, and then be able to get regular licenses. We feel that's a better way to not burden the town, number one. We also want to make sure that we're covering any expense that the town would normally have. We don't want to suddenly end up with a place where all the events that we have don't, you know, take fee away. And so I think we're actually at a place now where we're literally talking about what are those actual events sites, how big is the map, so to speak? And my hope is that come around the first of the year, we'll be able to be before you with a plan, so.
Talking to town council, sorry, a little difficult. Talking to town council, the expectation is in January, corporate counsel for the college, Suzanne would come with a plan for addressing that, it would allow you to have the kind of safety and controls I know the board is looking for, but do that on an annual license basis in most cases, and avoid all these one-day licenses, which is more complicated.
And the other thing that this affords us is because, again, noted earlier, the scale of Merrimack has shifted significantly in the past few years, and you've added venues that have more sophistication and options, that we want you to be successful there, but it does present more potential liability and monitoring necessity, and if we can kind of identify a way to address that at the beginning of the year and annually, that then puts everybody in the know, and I think that's more helpful, and I think the general community then has confidence then that it's more than just sort of the sketch back of the envelope.
I would completely agree, and again, just like the food truck, anything that we can do, the call upon the expertise of the town, you're also generous with helping us think through these matters, so I really do think we're going to end up with a place where we'll be able to reduce some of the just administrative oversight that's been provided in terms of the one-days, and making sure that everyone is in and in at the right time and all the rest of that stuff, and then still be able to come forward every year and have a conversation of how things are going, what those venues are, and like I said, avoid sort of the, it's a mad rush, as you can well imagine, to make sure we've got them all covered, and you know, unfortunately, we've had some situations to where we haven't gotten them in, and we've had to some adjust, make some adjustments, and I certainly would like to avoid that in the future, too.
Well, and I would also think, and certainly appreciate that, you have a new stadium there, and you're sort of at your baseline.
Yes.
And sort of opportunity and how to build on that, and we want to be partners with that, but there's a level of complexity with that, and as well as opportunity, and we want to have enough time to help everybody feel comfortable with that, so.
No question, and again, the town's been great in trying to help us think that through, so I do appreciate it greatly.
Great, great. So we're, I'll be happy to hear a motion on the request for the nine one-day licenses?
So yeah, so these licenses are for the athletic complex, right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, this is the, this is the first time that I've sat in, or the last time I wasn't here. So, I mean, I had a few comments, but unfortunately, I was out of town, so I wasn't able to make them. But, Mr. Doggett, can you like walk us through how this works, because I didn't, I wasn't here, and I don't know that we've had a representative from Merrimack that was here.
I'm just going to bring them up really quickly, just so I make sure I see which ones they all are. So one of the things that the institution is doing is trying to provide beer sales during games, whether that's at the field, as had been mentioned, or at the hockey arena. They're sold out outside in the lobby there. These are not like, you go to a major event and they're like walking around with them, you know, selling them out of containers. That's not what this is about. Just like all other events, like at Augie's, which is the pub on campus, tip-certified people are selling the beer, and we're keeping note what's going on. We'll have monitors, and obviously, we have officers and whatnot in the Lalo Arena and then at the football game. It's something we're working on. I think we're working with the town to try to see how this works a little bit. We've had some success. It has not turned into this wild boon of everybody's trying to, you know, get all their beer fix in before the night starts, but we have seen some interest in it, and we'd like to continue doing it.
So when you say monitors, you got people that are actually in the facility monitoring the alcohol?
Yes, yeah, officers are. Again, just like we do at Augie's Pub, right? So we always have an officer there, and then we also, we serve this through Sedexo, who has TIP certification for everyone who sells, just like you would find in a bar, and I think it's part of the process of oversight, so.
And do you allow alcohol in the student section? I mean, like, I know in, you have games, we get a very designated section for students.
Yeah, so we do, but the way that works is, is you can only buy one at a time. You can't like go in and buy as many as you can contain, like at Fenway Park and try to carry it up. And then there will be always someone there checking to see what, as much as I would love that to be, you know, 5,000-person area, right, probably seats or stands, a couple hundred students at a time. So we do monitor it, but again, it really hasn't, it hasn't turned into the place that everyone's going to to start their evening.
Yeah.
And so quite honestly, most of the sales are actually coming from adults, not the students.
So you only allow one beverage per acquisition?
Per acquisition.
I like that, I love that idea. 100% check ID.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Especially because it's something we already do somewhere else on the campus. It's not something we want to like start making difference of opinion. So if you go into Augie's, you got to swipe in, right, with your ID, right, so that, once you're in a bar, just like you were in a bar in town, but anywhere else, even when we have events with students, we will make sure that they're properly ID'd, whether that's with a wristband or things like that, so.
And are the lines exclusive for alcohol sales? You don't mix lines, food?
To be honest with you, I believe so, but I have not gone and bought one, so I actually can't say that for sure, but I believe that's the case.
Checks all my boxes, so appreciate that.
I have attended but not purchased alcohol, and the alcohol is separate from other sales.
Oh, it is, okay.
Police officers typically, so to the public knows, Merrimack Police Force is a police force, it's not a security force. They carry weapons, they're certified to be a police department, and their police officers present inside the venues in addition of Sedexo staff.
Yeah, thank you.
So my biggest concern is the alcohol in the student section. I think there's a huge mix of students in that section, and as long as it's being monitored, you know, of the ones that I had, that's the only one that you didn't really check off 100% in my mind, that, you know, is allowed to be alcohol in the student section.
Yeah, and we'll continue to monitor it. I mean, there'll always be officers there for obvious reasons, but again, this is something we're working through, right, and we've appreciated the town's efforts to try to help along the And we've appreciated the town's, uh, efforts to try to help along the way and try to get us to figure out exactly what the right approach to this is. Um, we're no more fans of the one-day licenses than anybody else, and I think part of that is when you've got the license and it's more predictable, you can put more resources into it, make sure you've got all the coverage that you need, um, and be much more forthright about it. So, um, that's the route we're, we're heading in.
Great, great.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you for, for adding that. Those are, those are all perspectives.
It's the first time we've had someone from Merrimack here to address these stuff. Sorry, which you were gonna...
I'm happy to, I'll take on any other challenges.
Well, it really helps.
They won't be back.
That's not true.
No, and it does really help because kind of putting more definition to this.
Yep.
Uh, process, as you say, it works for all of us.
Agreed.
Great, great. Uh, with that, I'll hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Paul Galant at Merrimack College for nine one-day wine and malt licenses for athletic concessions at the Merrimack Athletic Complex as presented.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening and a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, next on our list is, uh, two one-day wine and malt license requests from JT Thompson on behalf of Notch Brewing for events held at the Stevens Coolidge Place, uh, on November 29th and September 6th. I think JT can't be here, is there anybody else who can speak to it?
Yeah. Yeah, JT said he was out of town and would try to get someone else here, but he knew there would be some difficulty there.
Right. Um, so what we have in our packet is, um, favorable recommendation from the police and the fire department, the building inspector. Now, again, just so people may recall, Uh, Notch has done a number of events this year at Stevens Coolidge. Um, I think pretty well-attended, different times, different nature. Um, there had been some discussion about, um, parking and access and usage, and that conversation's ongoing. There is a diagram in here as to, uh, where this will be, uh, held and how it'll be held.
And we would, we would keep in place the same parking limitations that the board has supported.
Yeah. Has anybody heard any other feedback or concerns from the community?
I mean, I think they've had a couple of events there over the last six or eight months, and they've all been very successful, very well-run, so I don't have any concerns.
If I hear nothing further, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Notch Brewing Company for one, for two one-day wine and malt licenses for events at Stevens Coolidge Place on November 29th, 2018, and December 6th, 2018, from 4:30 PM to 9:00 PM.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we had one other, one other item on our agenda, but we, uh, had a request for that to be, uh, postponed. That was, uh, for Bertucci's, uh, for transfer and a pledge of their, all their alcohol and liquor licenses. So that's postponed.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue the Bertucci's until our next meeting on December 3rd, I believe it is.
Yes.
Sir?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you, and, uh, a motion to move out of licensing, please.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out of licensing.
Okay, now, um, we are on to consent items. We have a request of Rabbi Bronstein of Chabad Lubavitch of Merrimack Valley to use the town common to display a Hanukkah menorah from November 29th, 2018 to December 11th, 2018. Do we have the rabbi with us? No.
Madam Chair, approval.
Second. All in favor?
I'll get to that one, you try to go really quick. Please, really fast.
Okay. Next item is a request of the Festival Committee and the North Andover Police Association to use Main Street, Water Street, Elm Street, and Sutton Street for the annual Santa Parade on Saturday, November 24th, from noon to 2:00. Great, Mr. Chair.
Jeff Kokko, 695 Johnson Street, co-chair of the North Andover Festival Committee. We're gonna have our annual Santa Parade, uh, be conducted on the usual route, taking off around, uh, noon time from the middle school, heading down Main Street, turning onto Elm High Street, and then going up, uh, Water Street towards Main Street, concluding at Sutton Street. Hopefully, we'll have that in about an hour and a half or two hours and be over with it.
Twenty minutes.
Yeah. It's our, our biggest parade so far this year that we're gonna be having since the, uh, most amount of participants that we've had in, in our tenure.
It grills our media.
It does, it does.
That's awesome.
It's a credit to Lieutenant E.G. Folds, who really puts a lot of effort into it. The police association do a great job.
Well, it's nice also to be leading something happily.
There you go.
A whole group of people.
Nice, nice to give a little bit back, too, since, uh, things have been so dire lately that, uh, put a smile on people's faces.
We appreciate it. Uh, Madam Chair, I move that the Board of, uh, Selectmen approve, let's see, uh, request the Festival Committee to use the town common for...
No.
Oops, whoops, wrong one. Try.
One ahead.
I'm one ahead, I'm just so excited that you got something happy to talk about, because it's not... Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Festival Committee and the North Andover Police Association to conduct the annual Santa Parade on Saturday, November 24th, 2018, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 PM, and limit the parking along the parade route. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, you can just stay there, I guess.
Same, I'm moving.
Next item is, um, the request of the Festival Committee to use the town common for the annual Christmas tree lighting celebration on Sunday, November 25th, from 4:30 to 6:30, and to waive any municipal fees.
Thank you. Uh, once again, we're conducting our annual tree lighting festival, and we're hoping that, uh, the weather cooperates. I would like to add an amendment to that, if possible, that in the event that we get a total rain out, because they're talking about possible rain showers on, on Sunday, and, uh, if that's the case, we may like to move it to Sunday, December 2nd, if that's the case. Uh, if the Board would entertain that, I'd appreciate that.
But it's not, it's not just the rain on that night. I, I understand the ground is too wet to hang the lights.
That's where having a, yeah, it's, you have no...
No, I do.
I'd rather deal with emergency management issues right now than deal with, with the tree on the common, trust me. It's weighing that heavy on me. Yeah, unfortunately, we've had over twenty-five days of rain. Uh, the common is like a sponge right now, a wet sponge. Uh, I've been trying to work closely with DPW to get the bucket truck out there, but right now, if it goes out, it may not be coming off.
We'll be decorating the bucket.
Right, exactly.
I like that idea.
We'll have a new ornament. Uh, that's an issue. Uh, unfortunately, there was damage to the lights. We haven't been able to go out there and actually inspect them. What I'm hoping is that it was just vandalism at human level, if you will, and unplugged, because only one small string at the bottom is currently working, unless squirrels started deciding to eat the nice new environmentally-friendly soy coating that they have on all the lights now. They make the wire insulation out of soy product. Squirrels find it very tasty.
I don't think you're joking, right? But I could see by your face that you're not joking.
No, 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 I'm not. I wish I was. And I'm, and I'm hoping that, that that's the only issue, is just vandalism and not squirrels.
The soy is so durable.
Yeah, that's what.
You got a grant for that.
If that's the case, and we can physically get out there without the truck and repair it, we will.
Gladly.
So we're gonna be diligently working on that and hopefully, uh, get some semblance, a tree lit.
But it, it's great, though, that you've already planned for a, uh, rain or soggy day.
Right, right. Well, the, the good thing is Essex Street is always viable to be able to bring, uh, the truck in, the tromblies that we use as a flatbed for our, our live bands and our chorus, et cetera. And a lot of you have already been out there and actually been on that, so you're more than familiar with how that works. Uh, but, uh, we're just hoping that, uh, we don't have dire, dire conditions that day, that, uh, so everybody can enjoy it.
Well, a good hard freeze would help, but then it doesn't make it so much fun to be out.
There you go. I'd prefer the hard freeze right now, trust me.
I'd prefer not the hard freeze, given the existent, the, the number of people still without heat.
Good, good point.
But nonetheless, I think, I think we're getting the hard freeze, so...
Yeah, I know, I hear you.
We just can't win the prize for losing right now.
No, no, so we'll look at the bright side and make the best of it.
It'll be great, it always is. We have an extra week to pull it off.
There you go.
We need it.
Plenty of spotlights, too, right?
Oh, yeah, we, we have extra lights this year. Uh, we're, keep expanding and trying to, you know, being the emergency management director of public safety is the paramount thing with me, always err on the side of caution, so...
Because there were a ton of people last year.
Yeah, yeah.
And you had spotlights, and you had spotlights last year, too.
We did, but we need more.
Two years ago, there were, there were no spotlights.
Right.
That was fun.
So we've, we've increased, uh, our, our tower light capability, uh, that we're gonna have like four small tower lights plus the big one, uh, that we have on loan to the police department that will be out there. Uh, we'll have more lights around Santa's tent this year to make it a little more visible and, uh, cause there were issues, well, how the line formed, it's a learning curve, especially where it's been growing. We had probably close to a thousand people come through last year. We went through over eight hundred cookies, and I think we went through twenty-two gallons of hot chocolate. So...
I think it's worth saying, and I, you always see on social media, I think sometimes people forget that all of these things, I mean, this is a busy time of year, and all of this is planned by volunteers.
Yes, they're all, all volunteers.
This isn't a town employee or town departments, it is a group of people who just really do a lot for our town, and you guys bite off a lot and you always execute it really well. And so, thank you.
Okay, that's, you know...
Absolutely.
It's worth the stress, we, we enjoy it, but, uh, when we pull it off, that is.
You always pull it off, so...
We've been lucky somehow.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the town common for the Christmas tree lighting celebration on Sunday, November 25th, with a rain date for December 2nd, Sunday, December 2nd.
Correct.
Um, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, and to waive all fees.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, as always.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, as always.
Yes. Um, okay. The next item we have are two appointments. I will defer to someone from the cell appointment committee to speak on these.
Yeah, so I, I'll say a few things. So, we have, um, first of all, Desiree McDonough, who is being, uh, appointed to the Emergency Management Agency. Jeff, you might want to hang around again, or... So Desiree, um, became interested in, in being on this committee, on this agency during the, um, during the gas crisis. She started out as a, um, as a, as a, um, guest at the shelter that we had set up at the high school, and ended up being a very high-contributing person that was there and helped, uh, organize and everything and helping people out, and she expressed an interest after seeing the great work that these folks do, to becoming a member of that agency and followed through with it and interviewed with Chris and I. So, uh, I would like to recommend Desiree as an appointment to the Emergency Management Agency.
If anybody has any questions, I'd gladly answer them to the best of my ability from my interaction with her.
And, you know, having people with that sort of desire to help and who've proven themselves and, and jump right into it, uh, that's great. You've, you've got a big team, and you never realized how big you needed it till you needed it.
She was a great asset to us during the sheltering phase of the incident, and really stepped up to the plate and really became invaluable to us during that time, so...
Great, that's great.
So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Desiree McDonough to the Emergency Management Agency.
For a term?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're trying to add the terms.
Oh, yeah, good, good idea. Um, for a term ending June 30th, 2019, so she must be filling a role that was left open. Um, so for a term ending June 30th, 2019.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And the next one is Madhu Da, who is...
Thank you.
Who is, has requested to be put on the Sustainability Committee. Um, if I can remember Madhu right, she was a, uh, she's a teacher in Lawrence, and she has instituted some programs. She's a science teacher in Lawrence, and she's instituted some, uh, sustainable programs over in Lawrence schools, uh, some recycling programs. So she's got a real passion for this, for, um, sustainability, and, um, we're really lucky to have her, um, joining this, this group. So, with that, I would make a motion that we appoint Madhu Da to the Sustainability Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And as usual, we thank all of our committee volunteers, um, past, present, and future. Uh, we do have a, a great list of people that are, um, you know, we, we have, at this point, almost more volunteers than we have positions for, which is really fantastic. And, um, so it's really, says a lot for the people of this town that are willing to step up and, and really make it a great place to live. So we thank everybody who volunteers currently, our new volunteers, and those who are on that waiting list, uh, waiting for a slot to open somewhere along the line.
It's a bright opportunity.
Yeah, we're not losing anybody, so, you know, we, we try to get them on there. Um, so thank you.
All right, um, moving on to governmental reports. First up, we have Harry Esnonian, um, Chairman of the Old Center Historic District Commission, to give us an update on what is going on with the Old Center Commission. Thank you, Harry.
Harry Esnonian, 168 Osgood Street. Um, also Chairperson of the Old Center Historic District Commission. Um, we currently have nine members on the commission and all of those with two alternates, and, uh, currently, we have no vacancies, we're fully staffed or not, but, uh, in general, what we're seeing in the Old Center, um, is that most of the homeowners, um, are pretty well-engaged and, uh, have been doing a good job in, in terms of, uh, meeting all of the bylaws within the district. Um, additionally, the building department, um, has been extremely supportive in terms of, uh, keeping the process and compliance. Um, so we've kind of bolstered that in terms of any permit being issued, uh, whether or not it meets the bylaws or, or requires a certificate, uh, for, um, alteration. Um, but some of the opportunities we're currently looking at, um, are to provide possible signage at the five entry ports into the Old Center, um, to help, um, at least delineate, uh, that people are entering into the Old Center. Um, also, um, to increase the awareness and communication between different town boards and commissions, because oftentimes, you know, particularly, um, on the old Historic District Commission, and I also sit on the Machine Shop Village as well, um, oftentimes there's crossovers in terms of, you know, both prioritizing which decision gets made first, and then who do you go to, or, and sometimes we have, you know, conflicting decisions that may end up also on the plate. So, you know, an example of that, or a couple examples of that, um, one would be, um, the North Parish Church was evaluating whether or not they were gonna put a cell tower into, uh, the church steeple. Well, you know, currently, we have, uh, the town has, uh, a restriction on what could be done to the outside of that church, so that goes in front of the Historic Commission. So would they have to give a ruling first, or would we need to give a ruling first and then it goes to them? So, you know, providing direction to sometimes some of the applicants is important. Uh, another one was when, um, Verizon was putting in the low-level cell towers on top of the telephone poles. Uh, you know, uh, I work with Eric and, and our commission worked with Eric, but that required a federal, so, you know, there was, my understanding, I, I want to make sure I record it, I think there was thirty that were approved, but only one was in the Historic District on Academy Road, which was right outside of our first bearing ground. And so that particular one, because it was in the Historic District, required federal input. So that actually goes in front of, Verizon had to provide a report, um, to consultants, and then that had to be, there's a, there's a statute in the federal bylaws that requires them to evaluate whether or not they will approve that or not approve that. So working, as an example, working on that and maybe have found a suitable spot that may or may not have been in the district might have, you know, sort of helped a lot in the decision process. So I, I think that is an important thing, is to get that. So one of the things we're gonna try to do is invite various members, um, you know, and heads of various, um, boards and commissions, uh, that we sort of interact with and just kind of establish some of those relationships a little bit better, so they know kind of what we do and what we, 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 we need to make decisions on. Um, some of the concerns, I just, you know, probably most of you have heard, but just some of the concerns that have come up, um, in the Old Center, um, that we, we often hear, hear, like, um, is speed and volume of the vehicles going through the Old Center. Um, you know, that's a balance. I know it's a constant struggle for us as a town, um, but, um, particularly in the Old Center, I mean, uh, you know, if you look at some towns like Littleton, you know, Littleton has a great common, but they lost that due to traffic going around the common.[1638.91] great common, but they lost that due to traffic going around the common. You look at Bill Rickis Center, for example, that's become a rotary, you know, where, you know, the speed of cars going around it has totally diminished the ability of that central portion to have anything meaningful for their town. So, speed, volume, I mean, it's a challenge for the district. I just wanted to make sure that I point that out, because we constantly are hearing that. The signage, the number of signs that we're being challenged with, you know, that are coming in, that is also, and then a number of those signs.
Which signs are you referring to? Are you talking about those temporary, like, election signs?
No, we have, in the bylaws, we have, we have, for temporary signs, temporary signs, we have, that's not the restriction, but we have signage, you know, Stevens Schoolage has been expanding a lot of the signage around them. I mean, we're seeing it, you know, in the downtown area, you know, even to the point of sort of state signage, you know, in terms of road signage and so forth. Those are governed by, you know, there are certain codes and so forth. But we also, at the time that we did the renovation around the common, right, were also asked by the state and continue to, we can get exemptions if it's in a Historic District to minimize certain areas and certain things. It's not to completely, you know, eliminate them, but you can get exceptions to that.
It's the redundancy, where you've got a sign saying, "Crosswalk ahead," and then on the other side, "Crosswalk ahead," and then you've got another sign that says, "Crosswalk," and then you've got one from the other direction, "Crosswalk ahead." It's, and then there's several crosswalks in the Old Center. It's just-
It's getting congested.
It will, it's not just that it's congested, there's such thing as message overload where you don't see it anymore. And that becomes more dangerous than having too many signs. But it, nothing that a good plow couldn't take care of.
Yeah.
But-
So that signage and the numbers of signage is something that, the large truck tonnage, we've got a lot of, you know, large trucks that are sort of coming through the district, barreling through, I mean, we're talking 18-wheelers coming through the district. I mean, there's no, there's no restriction at this time for them to come through, but they're also using it as a sort of cut-through, if you will. And, you know, it, you know, just to give you an idea, I live in an old house. When you have that type of thing going down the road and vibrating the road on an old horsehair plaster house, it does impact the house. We're not built to today's, you know, new construction standards and you end up with hairline cracks, you end up, so, you know, when you look at old house investors, particularly around the common, you know, and so forth, they're investing a lot of money, you know, in terms of some of those old house structures and so forth.
What types of trucks, I mean, I know you said large 18-wheelers, but what are their functions? Are they like garbage trucks? Are they-
No, not the garbage trucks, no. I'm talking about like, you know, transport trucks, you know, like an AV-
The ones that should be going 114 to 125.
Correct, correct.
Even the garbage trucks that are collecting in that area should be going, in my opinion, 114 to 125, to get to the-
Correct.
To the emptying place.
Correct, correct. It just cumulative, it just adds and adds and adds. And so, you know, as we, you know, and this is a central portion, the Old Center, for our town. So, you know, in trying to maintain that as much as we can is going to become crucial, you know, particularly as we move forward.
Do we put those kind of restrictions in?
No, we try to, you know, I think one of the things that needs to be understood is you just can't stop trucks from traveling roads. Some of the traffic issues are fair, we get that a lot in terms of feedback around the common. Part of it is, quite frankly, we've gone from a town of 15, 16, 17,000 over 30,000, and a fair amount of the new development is on the east side of the roundabout, you know, that's where a lot of folks travel and they come down Mass Ave and they go through that. We have to provide information to the state, we have to show volumes, you know, based upon what we've gotten as feedback in a couple of other places where we've attempted to do that in, quite frankly, more dense neighborhoods. We probably don't meet the warrants to be able to prevent trucks from traveling down those roads. We'd have to count and take a look to see if that's the case. It's just where you're pushing them next, you know, where are they going next?
Because you have to identify alternative routes anyways.
Typically, we have to identify alternative routes, right. So we've done it in the sort of Green Street neighborhood, when there was some people coming off Mass Ave, going to the Mills, as an example. We've on two different occasions captured traffic data. The streets are smaller, thinner, house age is actually similar, you know, within 10 or 15 years. And we were not successful in being able to limit trucks within those neighborhoods.
Could we, what's the burden of at least doing a study to see what the status of those heavy vehicles actually are using that pathway and trying to figure out where, because like you said, we've had a lot of that one on that side of town, but it's all residential. And so it doesn't really explain the increased 18-wheeler traffic, if there is, maybe there's not.
But the problem is, you have 114, that is the main road coming from, you know, Salem, Lynn, going over towards Hayrow. So then now you add Johnson Street and Salem Street. It's a main cut-through to get from one part of the North Shore to another part. And that's part of the problem.
From 495 to Middleton or something like that?
Yeah, 495, yeah. I would say 95. I mean, the thing is, it's not a truck-traffic-specific cut-through. For those folks who travel through that area any morning, it's the fair amount of folks traveling from the 95 Oxford side to North Andover, they're coming absolutely through, and that's not going to change. There's not an alternative route. You know, as best I can see, there are folks spend some time watching the traffic there, there are folks who come down Great Pond Road and cut through, you know, by Stevens Street to get back on, head out toward 95, there are folks who come over 133 over the hill coming by, you know, get on Great Pond Road. So it is, we're certainly aware that the highest traffic volumes we have, certainly in the mornings, run from the Mass Ave, Mass Ave area, it's down to Waverly, all the way through Mass Ave, Osgood, and the Roundabout. That is where, sort of the central location where a lot of traffic is, if you certainly can add 125 up around the middle.
But I don't think it's the on-reveal traffic that's the concern. I think it's more of the heavy truck traffic that, you know, they could be using the same route. They're getting off 495, they can cut through and to get up to 114 instead of going, you know, the further way up.
That's why I bring up the other traffic, because it's just a different kind of vehicle using the same routes.
Yeah.
In the way the town is set up, I mean, we are a rectangle and most of the line of traffic goes this way. There's not as much that goes, you know.
Right. And one of the other things that was mentioned was that there were different speed zones, like coming down, one coming from Andover, one leaving the rotary, one, you know, so they're not all in sync and true. That's another-
That's, the town has a townwide speed limit, as every community does in Massachusetts. We have only exceptions traditionally, traditionally, and there's a few exceptions to that around school areas. But townwide traffic, Main Street's 35 miles an hour, limit an hour.
Yep.
So if there's some drop, it would never be higher, right? So I assume you mean some reduced speeds. Those reduced speeds, again, are typically started at 35, can go down as low as 30. Again, if you're dropping below that into the 25 realm, you need pretty intense traffic studies. And you're going to need to show average speeds well above a 35.
Correct.
We do a lot of more traffic studies than people are working around the community. And although I'm particularly sensitive to that, because I always think everybody's driving as fast as I drive, I think, we find on average, you'd be surprised how many people don't really travel. We don't have a lot of streets where the average speed is anywhere near the posted speed limit. But you get people to travel over there.
Yeah. So one of the things from our perspective that we have, and kind of this brings me into the next thing, is like kind of some of the initiatives that we have sort of earmarked or kind of looking toward, okay. So I think we could probably put it into two buckets. One would be, and just to continue onto this one, would be into looking at landscape preservation as it relates to the Old Center. And that's probably a bigger bucket than just dealing with these couple of issues that have been brought up, but also things like, for example, stone wall restoration, okay? We have a lot of beautiful stone walls that are within the district. A lot of them, you know, have gone through overgrowth and saplings that have, you know, ended up growing up and so forth. So, you know, that would be a restoration project, you know, in terms of how do we continue to, you know, expand and showcase the Old Center. And, you know, there's a couple of different ways that we could look at that. So, for example, you know, certainly, we could, you know, get an initial study done as to what we need to do in terms of getting the landscape preservation done. And we certainly can put, you know, something forward to CPA. But also, just, I'm not sure you're aware, but Mass Historic Commission also offers the ability to do landscape preservation. That's a 50% match. So we would, that, you know, where CPA isn't giving us the 50% match, we may be able to get a 50% match from Mass Historic.
Was that the one, though, that had the pathways all through the common and signage on different things? Because that, the people didn't seem to really like that. Is that the same one?
No.
Okay.
No. No, you're saying the one that the Stevens goes up the hill and goes up beyond the second period of, from the common going up?
Nan's trail up, up and over?
Correct.
My understanding, you might, you're probably right, but it was also a lot having to do with pathways in, on the common proper.
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, that was back several years ago, and a lot of people just don't mess with my common.
We don't want to, yeah, the intent is not to mess with the common, but more to enhance. So, for example, you know, you know, these types of projects, you know, we could get, we could bring in Mass Historic Commission to help us with, you know, designing and evaluating, you know, ways to maintain and slow down the, the sort of push on to the district. That's, that was the intent of number one. The second initiative we're looking at is to sort of revise and update our bylaws. Our bylaws probably at this point need to go through a revision. The map itself is relating to prior to the work, and a lot of our current restrictions are between a 200 and 400-foot setback from the middle of the road, but it doesn't include the rotary. We still have all the four-way stops in our map. We have road markers that were prior to any modifications that were made to the common. In addition, you know, back when these bylaws were done, just as another example, there's numerous examples, I'm not going to go through them all, but just as another example, we require of our applicant a legal posting in a newspaper, which, you know, adds an additional burden to the applicant in terms of cost. Additionally, it takes in two, 14 days, two weeks of additional time that a lot of people have contractors waiting to do work and so forth. And then you got to get another week in front of that. So you're expanding the sort of, the application process, where when I'm on the Machine Shop Village, we can just do public notice like we do for most of the meetings that we now have in town, and that's adequate to meet the requirement. So I think that's just a small example of something additional in the bylaws. We need to update to, we are a byproduct of 40C. So 40C has been updated several times. Things, for example, new technologies, you know, anything from, you know, solar panels to cell towers or any of those sorts of technology-based things are not fully included. Although someone in the 1970s who originally wrote our bylaw had the foresight to include solar collectors and also somebody who had the foresight to look at RF sort of transmitters, if you will. So we're one of the few towns in the entire state that Historic District actually has something in there that gives us at least governance over what's placed and how it's placed. So, but we need to expand that and get that more sort of up to 40C. The other thing we want to also look at is the Kittredge property itself. And right now, the Kittredge family has done an outstanding job at putting all three of their buildings on, as national, onto the National Registry. But the farm itself, the land itself, is not part of the district. And we would like to evaluate possibly putting the whole parcel of property onto the district for, you know, sort of the future, just to make sure that that's protected as part of the district. It's so sensitive to Academy Lane.
So is all of Academy Lane in the district, is it?
Well, you know, that's a great question. And one of the things we're discussing is to, and we've talked to the homeowners as well. So the way that currently that the bylaw is written is public way, based on footage from the public way. So let me give you an example. On Academy Road, it's, has a 400-foot setback is the jurisdiction. So anything, if you're at 401, we don't have it. And so there was a solar collector on Academy Road that was at 408. And we weren't able to do it. Even though you can see it from other public ways, we can't. So what we think may be a better way to do it is if we just look at the property lines themselves, which are usually greater than the 200 or 400-foot setback and just, it'll make it cleaner. Because right now, we, you have to measure from the center of the road, the center point of the road, to that setback, which is not always easy to do, even with Google Maps. So that's another example. So there's some cleanup. I mean, I just, it's not, but there was some cleanup to tighten things up and move those forward. That's all I have right now. Any questions?
Very good, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you for all your work. It means a lot to all of us that-
Thank you.
That we preserve our history and the look of our Old Center and others, Machine Shop Village. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It also opened our eyes to all of these different points that aren't often brought up in meetings.
I have one other thing, you know, that I wanted, when you said Machine Shop Village, because I was just in a meeting on Machine Shop Village. So, you know, on Machine Shop Village, we just had a homeowner right on Main Street, actually right next to St. Michael's Church, who's doing a renovation of the old house there. And the gas company is actually not placing the meters in places that they were before.
Discreet areas. They're not placing them in discreet areas.
Well, they're not placing them inside. So is it an inside meter moving outside or is it already outside?
It's outside right now, you know, the homeowner was-
If, if the meter was inside, the current code, federal code, requires to be placed outside. If it was outside, it probably was going back where it already was.
I don't know the answer to that question. I understand what you're saying. I don't know that. I know that it wasn't, it wasn't in front of the house previously. Whether it was inside or not, I don't know.
It was probably inside.
But it's this massive jungle thing, you know, right in front of the house now that kind of looks hideous.
We're aware of the problem, and we're working with National Grid when they come back, National Grid, sorry, Columbia Gas, when they come back in the spring, and they will be back in the spring, to be, try to work with homeowners to see if we can move meters if they were placed in new areas where that new area really creates, you know, an unsightly outcome. Some cases have been moved from inside directly out front. If they're within five feet of a driveway, they have to now place two full-foot steel encased concrete bollards on either side of the meter. That's an additional, it's a nice attraction, depending on the color, so we're-
Yellow.
Working, yellow, battleship gray. So we're working with them to understand that in cases where they had to move them, that they spend more time in the spring finding better places whenever possible.
Okay. I just, I did say I would mention that, though.
Appreciate it.
And do you have a common question?
I just, I appreciate that you came and brought up all these things that normally we don't get a chance to dive into about the Old Center.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is an update from North Andover CAM. We have Steve DiNofrio, Chairman of the Board for North Andover CAM, to give us an update.
Good evening, all. Steve DiNofrio, 947 Great Pond Road. Very exciting times around North Andover CAM. As you know, we're in the midst of our building. We have Tom Zarico that I think most all of you are familiar with. He has been doing a fantastic job. We got off to a slow start, realized we needed some, some help. Fortunately, one of our board members, who's also a real estate agent, knows Tom, had worked with him and wasn't sure he was going to be able to have the time, but Tom has been fantastic. He has given it his all. We hired a contractor, who even Tom has said that he would be proud to call this job his, the level of work that they've been doing. We feel very comfortable that we're on schedule. We are hoping to finish by the end of the year, but with the two vacation weeks, I've been told, ordering cabinets and then the furniture in the control room, typically, they take four weeks and that could be six weeks out. So, but at any rate, we're hoping for the new year that we will have a finished, a finished location there. On the technical side of things, Bill Roberts is a full-time employee at CAM. He had designed out two studios. He designed Wilmington's actually twice, once when they were bringing it up from standard def to high def. So he had plans that he showed me from Wilmington, that he said, here are things that I did in Wilmington, and here are some of the things that I want to bring to the new facility. So that, so he is in high gear on the technical side of that. It has been a wonderful input. We're looking to go beyond the TV. We have a full kitchen, full operational kitchen, that if you want to enjoy a cup of tea, or if you want to make a complete Thanksgiving Day dinner, that this kitchen is going to lend itself. Working again with Tom Zarico, we were able to secure a very generous donation from Jackson Lumber. It was always my hope to get as many North Andover companies and people involved in this. And so to get Jackson Lumber on board, they made about a 50% reduction in the cost of the cabinets, about $5,000 worth of value that they're donating to the cause. And so we're looking forward to that. We've made very few design changes, some small ones as the questions have come up, can we do this and this, and without a major impact with our schedule, our budget. So we've made some small improvements along the way and looking forward to unveiling that. And certainly want to serve the town, make it as much a community center as it is a TV center, so that we will have a large meeting room, we'll have large spaces that is, any group has whatever needs that they have, and combined with the kitchen and the other facilities right here on 70 Main Street, looking forward to all of that. So that has all been going, going very, very well.
I would think you'd have to offer cooking shows now with a full kitchen.
Absolutely, absolutely. The, don't tell anyone, but our plan-
Of course we won't.
The, good, thank you. I'll hold you to that. Our plan is also to take it to the next step. Having a son who performed in the band, he was a Boy Scout. The two young men were in my son's scout troop. My son became an Eagle Scout as well. And so we, and also- And so we, and also when I first came to the town almost twenty years ago, I loved, loved the Santa Claus parade and other events, but I didn't see anyone videotaping it. So being a video professional myself, I grabbed a camera and went out there and would talk to any eight to eighty-year-old that would talk on camera and would capture these kind of events. And now we see down at Main Street, we have a whole crew that comes down and covers those, again, as, as part of the community. So we're going to look to the other nonprofits like ours and how we can promote them the best we can. In addition to the cooking shows, we have restaurants that we're going to invite chefs from the local restaurants to come in. We're going to talk to the different, the Vineyard, McLunes, and others like that to come in and, and offer what is their suggestion for the wine would go with this meal. So we'll combine resources as far as that's concerned and, and give people lessons. We want to, again, have kids in there. We removed a wall so that we would have additional camera angles, because I, we're setting the island up that will have, we can't leave it so that there can be stools or workers on one side. And we want to have kids decorating cupcakes and adults decorating cupcakes. I've had plenty of offers, so we'll let you know when that's going to happen. But, so again, we want to get as many different organizations involved as possible. And we're going to form alliances with, with many of the groups that we've worked with. I know from doing the opening day ceremony some years back, in talking, interviewing the commissioner, there were twelve hundred boys and girls that took part just in the baseball program here in town, and three hundred coaches who volunteered their time. So we want to capture those kind of people. The band, the chorus group has two hundred performers. So I'm, I'm happy to say we've, we've already outgrown the building before we've moved in with that size group. But we have ways and technology of having them perform at the high school. We can show their performances live simultaneously. We're going to do as much with social media so that as parents and other people in the neighborhood, if they can't be there, including our open house that we're going to plan, that they can tap into their social media and their phones, and they can be, be there. And when we have an auction, they can make bids online. And we have, we have plans to, to really go beyond what CAM has done here in the past.
So obviously, I think many people may know that there was some organizational changes in the organization recently. I think we would appreciate some comments as to how you're going to move forward based on that, what, who's going to take forward some of the FCC-related, you know, work preparing for the response to the proposed FCC rule? Who's going to be in charge of this programming? What's your, what's your go-forward plan related to that?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. We, looking forward, we're going to either a meeting with the staff to see if anyone there is interested in being the interim manager in the process. Mass Access is a website that is a tremendous resource for all access communities. And we're going to be working with them, posting the position there to fill that position. We're also going to look for, I work in the freelance world, so we're contacting people in the, the producers that I work with, that on an interim basis for the next, realistically, probably couple of months, that would be interested in coming in either on an interim basis or until we, if they are interested in the full-time position, to advertise and all of the available resources to, to advertise, so we can get that position filled as soon as possible.
So Steve, that's, you said you will. So that means you haven't contacted any of these groups yet?
I haven't. The situation was just last, last week. I've met with the staff once, I'm meeting with the CAM staff again tomorrow. And then I'll be putting all of the marketing information together and getting approval from the board this week.
So it, I think begs a question, a follow-up question from us. If you could provide us with a little bit of direction as to what happened? Because of course, CAM currently is located inside one of our school buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And you receive your funding through licensing arrangements that the town negotiates. And so it would seem to me, this sounds abrupt, but was it, I mean, I would like a little bit more background on the split, because it doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like you've yet got that ball rolling on what CAM Studios now does, now that their executive director is no longer with them.
Mm-hmm. I, because of the sensitivity of, of the situation, unfortunately, I can't give specifics to that. But the board is, is committed to doing all the things that I had mentioned as far as moving ahead. And we're going to be advertising for the position and doing everything in our power.
So is this something that happened suddenly, or was that something that happened at a meeting that you had posted?
It has been an ongoing process.
So your board, I mean, your board of directors is fairly unique in the sense that not every member ends up on that board the same way. Some of them are accountable to the superintendent, some of them are accountable to the actual membership of NA CAM. Some, like yourself, are accountable to this board. And there have been no issues brought to our attention. I mean, I was chair last year. Madam Chairman and I had had conversations. I mean, there's been nothing that's been brought to the attention of this board that there were issues that we should be aware of. Again, it's a facility that I know will soon be located on Main Street, but is currently located in a government building.
Mm-hmm.
And receives funding through negotiations that this town has. And so why weren't you making us aware of any situations that there really were some problems that were happening the past several months?
I think just, we hadn't set up a regular check-in. Looking back, I mean, I take responsibility for not sitting down with the board. I certainly came in contact with the board. The executive director at the time had handled all business dealings with, with Andrew Mailer and, and the board and others and reported back to us. So, I mean, that I will take responsibility for. And looking ahead, that's certainly an area that, an area of all communication that needs to go on between the board and ourselves and yourselves as well. We haven't had any problems that we felt needed to be brought to the Board of Selectment in the past. And as I said, there was a process in place. And why that didn't get communicated to by all parties, I can only, I can only tell you what, what our situation is and what we're doing to ensure that that doesn't happen in the future.
It's not really a, we, it's, it's a, you are appointed to this board.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we had a meeting two weeks ago where we had your executive director here. And I think this board expressed a general happiness with the way that our CAM studio works, especially when compared to other communities. Other communities have great programs. I think we're all really proud and with Andover of what we've seen accomplished over the past decade. I mean, they're ubiquitous, CAM and their staff are at every single event, weekend events, evening events, morning events. And so for us, I mean, I think that there's a tough, I'm having difficulty, and I know that this can be a tense type of topic to have at a public meeting, but I'm having difficulty wrapping my heads around, my head around the decision to terminate in part ways with a ten-year employee who I think has been very well received. Me personally, as a volunteer there for years, I always felt like I received the resources I needed. And this particular executive director and the staff that worked there did a really good job at, I think, engaging other members of our community to go in there and work in their studio. And so, I mean, it's an abrupt decision and one that we were not given any type of indication was a problem that was coming. I mean, I know that you're, you know, this isn't a simple vote. I mean, you terminated somebody who was the face of CAM for the past decade. I mean, this wasn't a temporary employee. This was a major decision, as you're in the middle of a rebuild right now. I mean, I just, I want to express my frustration and the frustration that has been expressed to me by the, by a limited number of people who I guess are aware that have a connection to North Andover CAM and that appreciate it as the resource it is in the community. And it doesn't sound like there's a plan. It sounds like there's a plan right now, I should say, to start looking for a replacement. And yet, I think that we as a board need to know, I mean, if there's something pressing that we should be made aware of, we should be made aware of it. And if there's not something pressing, then why couldn't we have been informed in advance? And why couldn't a plan be in place before the decision was made to part ways with the former executive director?
Mm-hmm. As I said, we'll open up all communications, absolutely. We'll have a better communication with, with this board so that, you know, you're, you're well-informed on all of those. It was a process that, it, it wasn't based on one decision. It wasn't a rash decision. There was a process put in place that was recommended to us by our council. And so why I didn't sit down with you beforehand, I, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. I'm glad to hear that, Pete, I've heard very, a lot of good comments, a lot of wonderful comments about CAM. And, and that's fantastic. And we, we took everything, absolutely everything into consideration when we made our, when, when the situation came around.
Is it a situation that we should be made aware of, though? Again, because there were certain ways that CAM, I know CAM is a nonprofit, but there were certain ways that you interfaced with the town, that is this something that we should be having an executive session with to learn more about? Or is it just a general staff disagreement? I mean, if it was a general staff disagreement, it sounds like, again, your decision wasn't made rashly. I just, I want to belabor this point. I think it's important. Then we should have been made aware, as a Board of Selectmen, the chairman and the town, town manager should have been made aware long in advance, instead of being surprised with it after the fact, and then us having to reach out to CAM representatives to find out what happened.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, to, to piggyback on that, I guess, I feel like it's a lack of, a lack of process and procedure between, between us that resulted in us not getting some advanced notice. Can you share with us, understanding an HR matter is a sensitive matter, you're not going to maybe discuss the specifics of it in a public meeting, but the process that was followed to get to the point of terminating an employee? I mean, what kind of process happened, I guess? Can you explain that?
I'm getting a little uncomfortable with words like terminate and, and the fact that we don't have the person here.
It's not a town employee.
But I don't, and also I'm not, I don't want to ask the specifics about the person. I'm saying, any organization, I worked for companies my whole life, and there's a performance management process. I have a role, I have objectives, I have...
That, that kind of I understand, I just...
You know?
That's what we're asking.
So, okay, forget the use of the word termination. Can you explain the, the performance management process of, of CAM?
What I can say is there was a, there's always been a performance yearly review process in place. And there's always been, our board, the way I've described it to other people, is that we meet once a month, ten times a year, usually once during the summer, usually not during the Christmas season. And so we have regular check-ins, even though in our bylaws, we need to meet by law four times a year. We've always, there's always, every board meeting we get together, we get a lot done. We make, take votes through email. We've always kind of done that to make the process as efficient as possible. So because of the building, that certainly has, we've, we've had far more than a, a meeting a month, sometimes every week, sometimes several. It really depends on the, the issues that have been going on. So again, I can't get into the specifics, but I can say that there was a process put in place. It is a review process that we got direction from our personal attorney, just the structure of it. What should we do when we have issues? Are they, you know, of what nature and who do we involve? Do we need to go to a police department for any particular issues? At what time do you go to a police department if you have a certain issue?
When was this process put in place?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. You're not insinuating that the police needed to be called into this?
No, no, I'm not. I'm just saying if, if someone had made a complaint or had an issue, you know, who, who do you go to at what point?
We're talking about a performance management process. Hopefully, we don't have to get a police involved in a performance management process.
No, no.
So when was the performance management process?
But I don't, I want to make it clear, can I just interrupt for, that you're not insinuating that the police needed to be involved in this situation?
No, they were not. I'm just saying if there was an incident that came up...
Because that would be very troubling to have that said.
We would go to them for what direction they said we would need to handle a, that particular situation. It's not this situation.
Okay, okay.
So when was the performance management process put in place? Was it then?
A year and a half ago.
So up to that point, there was no performance management process? So after that?
Regularly yearly reviews.
Okay, so that's the performance management process, then?
That, that would have been that one, yes, for all of the employees, each of the employees.
So that was, that process has been in place more than just a year and a half ago? That's been in place?
As long as I've been with the group, yes.
So we can see, then, these annual reviews?
Were they written?
Yes.
So you could, so we can see the process of which you did the annual reviews? You can see the annual reviews?
Well, they're not public. I don't think we can see them.
But we could in an executive session?
Unless the employee, no, I would say unless the employee agrees to it, we couldn't see them. But that is, it's not a public employee.
Okay. But you're representing to us that they're annual reviews and that the, if an employee was willing to, they would be able to share that, correct?
I'm not a lawyer, I can't, I'm not sure I'm educated on the matter to answer that question.
So when did you engage this council for this most recent situation?
A year and a half ago.
So did you speak to the council prior to this termination or prior to this action more than a year and a half ago?
We've been dealing with this, working with this person for different situations exactly like past five years or, or more.
So that wasn't my question.
Okay.
The question was, have you engaged this council prior to this action? If so, when prior to this action?
You mean specifically about?
Specifically to this action.
Related to this action, yes, thank you.
It would have been a year and a half ago, just for this incident.
Sorry, when you say this council, this is like a HR legal person who advises you as a director of this nonprofit?
A personnel attorney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, just trying to understand, because there are bylaws that govern all of our boards. And one of the things that, because in addition, there is public funding with this, the following of those bylaws and those procedures are critically important, because there are funds and liabilities at risk. So I think that's some of the concern about the questions that are, that are coming up here. And again, to select me, DeColigero's comment, because of the kind of right turn from where we were sitting two weeks ago, you can appreciate why this has got our, our attention.
This kind of prompted for me, I never really dove into your bylaws before. I just need to ask, before, did you say that you actually vote by email?
There were certain, in certain cases, we'll, we'll create motions through email, that I was explained that it's, it's proper tech, and then we'll, I was explained that we can do it by email. Then at the following meeting, when we get together, we'll ratify that motion as necessary.
Does this board have, in the, I also had not really paid, dived into the bylaws until recently. And there's mention of two subcommittees, the building subcommittee and a finance and fundraising subcommittee. Do those committees exist, or is it just the board of directors kind of does everything?
The, two of the members on the building committee are members on the board of directors. And then we started the building committee back when we had started the process seriously a couple of years ago.
So the building committee was responsible for getting input from all the parties and putting together the design, hiring a planner, architect, whatever, and getting together the plans and coming up with a design for the building and so forth and so on.
There were several properties that we looked at. Everyone, the board and the building committee, were all invited to come when it was a more serious consideration. So as far as location as well, so in all aspects of, of the building process at that time.
Steve, your annual meeting is supposed to be in April. Did you have an annual meeting this past year?
We didn't because of the building, what was going on with the building.
So you suspended the annual meeting, which is where your membership, that is the only opportunity your membership has each year to actually elect your colleagues on the board of directors, of which oversee the studio.
Mm-hmm.
Knowing your bylaws, does it say that you can suspend having that annual meeting? That's like us suspending an election.
It was brought to my attention that we would, our hopes is to be done in the fall and to reschedule it within the same year, closer to the buildings.
They say April, that you shall have it in April. And then prior filings with the Secretary of State's office say that you've had them at different months of the year. The most recent filing for 2016 said that you had, had the annual meeting in June. I mean, your, your bylaws are black and white, they're only eighteen pages. I mean, it's pretty, I mean, there were certainly some questions that I had that I don't think that they addressed, but I think we've all been parts of nonprofits before where bylaws create ambiguity. There's really no ambiguity here. You're supposed to have an annual meeting every April, and that's where you elect your board of directors, your colleagues, or at least the ones with staggered terms, so that they can govern the organization and ideally hire staff. You didn't have one this year, did you have one last year?
We had one, as far as I know, yes, a year ago.
Well, you're the president, you've been the president, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm. We haven't, we haven't always had it in April, depending on what's going on with the organization and what's going on in the town, because we also videotape it live. So we have a crew that we have, sometimes they're students. So if there's a band concert going on, things like that, we try to work around the schedule that's in the town. I was told we could change it from that date. So I guess that I was misinformed.
I suppose so.
Okay.
However, just to be clear, this past year, you didn't change it? However, just to be clear, this past year, you didn't change it, you canceled it?
We postponed it in hopes that we would have it at a later time this year.
Okay, so is it happening? So it was canceled. That's where your membership has the opportunity to elect the people in your position that determine who the staff is. You didn't have that this past year. I just want to emphasize that. I mean, that sounds, it sounds like a silly point to belabor, but again, otherwise, where's your accountability? I mean, I know that you said that you didn't speak to us, and I appreciate your apology. I mean, again, you're accountable to this board of selectmen. Three of your colleagues are accountable to the membership. Actually, I would argue all, five of you to a certain degree are accountable to the membership, but three of them are elected by that membership. And you, as president of the board, you're responsible for scheduling these things within the parameters of the bylaws. I mean, that's, I guess that's an important point. It may seem like it's not. It's an important point when you cancel the election, and the people who sit there then determine whether or not people continue to work and make a salary, especially when those people have been ingrained in the community and I think represent our town and not just CAM. But that's...
Actually, technically, one of the members is expired. One of the members' term is expired, so that should be addressed.
Absolutely.
So just some context, since I'm sure if there's folks sitting at home wondering what we're talking about, there is a nonprofit organization, which is North End of a CAM, charged by the board, really was a recommendation of the board of selectmen 15 or so years ago to create a nonprofit, really to put on the kind of program that has been put on so well for that period of time. The town, not by written agreement, but really by a recommendation of the board dating back to that point, provides the lion's share of PEG funding to North End of a CAM to operate and put on the program I identified. That board, the board of directors, which operates out of its own discreet nonprofit, its own tax ID number, has a five-member board, one is appointed by the board of selectmen. Chairman DiNofrio is that member. How long you been on, Steve?
Eleven years.
Chairman for?
The past five.
Okay. There is a member appointed by the school superintendent, which happens to be the technology director for the school department, and three members that are appointed by the membership of North End of a CAM, because in addition to creating a nonprofit, that nonprofit has members, people pay a nominal fee and can be a member of that particular group. In their bylaws, it does identify an annual meeting, as most nonprofit bylaws do, to be held in April, and as part of that, there's some election process to fill in the group. So that's the sort of context of things. Steve, your appointment runs as consistent with other members, three years, and the board controls the reappointment process?
Right.
Yep. Just in a passing recommendation of that, this board, and I have supported that for the appointments I make, board should have a regular turnover of chairman. I think that what happens sometimes in times of conflict or not-so-smooth operation, the fact that a chair has sat for a long time can create uncertainty from others of whether or not anything is personal. So I just, my own recommendation would be, as a regular practice, is to alter the chairman of the particular group. And just one other more business-related comment, as the board progresses to make whatever changes you're going to make, that no members of the board serve as interim director. I would certainly say that that's going to, would only leave sort of an uncertainty and confusion about what happens next, and can create other kinds of rumor that is never productive. And so I would suggest that no member of the board of directors, that's your, you know, your direction to take, and no member of the board of directors serve as that interim person, or quite frankly, that any members apply for the position unless you're willing to sort of hang that up somewhere and show to the world that that's in some way benefits the group.
Who is, who is in charge of North End of a CAM right now?
It would be the board.
So the board is running it as committee right now, managing the day-to-day?
Correct.
Activities? Okay.
And just to Mr. Collier-Gero's points, when there are meetings with employees, which make perfect sense to me, I would hope to be either posted meetings with multiple members of the board, and that not be one board member meeting with the employees. Otherwise, it leaves the employees the impression that whoever is meeting with them has sort of more control than the others. So I'm not sure what structure you put in place to meet with the employees, but I would not recommend that be one board member with the employees. You'd have the tendency to leave the employees the impression, again, that a member is serving as sort of the de facto executive director. And I, you know, I think you should be concerned about that.
Certainly.
And of course, no board members take any type of salary from North End of a CAM, correct?
Do we get salary? No. No stipends or no payment at all?
Are there any other questions for Mr. DiNofrio?
At this point.
I have just another thought, which is something for us to think about, maybe address in future minutes. But when I read the bylaws, actually, I was a little bit surprised that the board of selectmen only has one appointment to this board, considering the town provides the lion's share of the funding. So it might be something that we think about, asking the board to consider its bylaws and whether or not the town should have more of a representation, whether it's another appointment or perhaps, for example, we have the cable advisory committee, which Chris McClure is on, who negotiates the contracts with the cable companies that actually is how we make this money. Maybe it makes sense for him, for example, to be, or the IT director, whoever is filling the town IT director, for example, to be on this board. Just something for us to think about as to, for future, I don't think we're going to labor that tonight.
No, but I appreciate you at least bringing that up, because I think your experience is with being on the appointment subcommittee and with selectman Valen, but we see the ability, the skills of the folks who are in this community and what they've brought in these appointments in the past couple of years, just from our own personal experience. And I also think that the level of expectation in terms of transparency, in terms of dealing with the complexities, and also the connectedness here, and that struck me a little bit by listening to what Harry had to say previously about the communication, working with other groups and the overlap. Television and that medium as its communication really connects a lot of places now that we didn't see 15 years ago. So I would be, as a member of the appointment subcommittee, certainly open to having that discussion on our agenda going forward.
Yeah, I think it's important, because, I mean, actually, looking at the membership now, there's actually three of them are expired memberships. So three expired members. They all, the terms expired on 6/30/2018. So by not having that meeting in April, all three, three members who are appointed by the membership appears to be expired. So that's, I mean, that wouldn't happen if we went through this other process, right? And that alone is the reason why we need to have those meetings on a regular basis. You're working on an expired board meeting.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Next, we have an update from our town manager on the gas crisis.
Madam Chairman, I figured I'd give you the type of briefs that we've been providing the board every two weeks or so. We're making some progress, I think the board knows, and probably the public knows, have been a little more vocal about my interest to have the pace picked up, really largely on what we have seen to be a November, which isn't as ideal from a weather perspective as we'd hoped. We're seeing some snow, the possibility of snow this week. There's some weather forecast, which has us drop below 20 degrees for multiple days in the evening, and obviously concerned about those folks that remain not relit or unlit, which just for us means that they don't have gas back in the house. As the board knows, we switched from a program that hoped to get everybody in the three communities relit by November 19th, retool that project several weeks ago to allow for the repair of a boiler as opposed to the replacement of the boiler, with the hope, again, that we would try to meet more aggressive deadlines. The November 19th date was determined several weeks ago could not be met, and therefore agreed to come up with an alternative plan, which would relight people and get people heat faster in their homes. Ultimately, that's, that's the goal. And to look at appliances on a secondary wave after the relight was completed. Secondary goal had us completing those relights somewhere in early December. It looks like, based upon what I can see as data, that we're still headed for that timeframe. We, at a point in which I made more, I raised concerns a couple of weeks ago, we were averaging about 2% to 3% of the relight population coming back on every day. Since that date, it's been 4% to 5%. Today was 5%. I have us right around December 2nd, as the relight date, which is a week from this Sunday, two weeks from yesterday, should get most of the houses, if not all of the houses, re-lit, so they'll have heat and hot water back, and then finishing up the appliances. There's nearly 6,000 appliances needed to be replaced, and what I mean by that is those heat non-hot, heat and hot water appliances. Just north, about 52% or 53% of those appliances has been, have been replaced. They'll continue to do that, but the focus today is to get heat and hot water back in homes. Still is more than 1,700 families outside of their homes, in hotels, RVs, and other locations. Obviously, the goal is to drive that number down as aggressively as possible. I put out some messaging today that although we want people to come back to their homes, this is a three or four-day stretch that there shouldn't be any risk. If a person feels like they're cold, they should not be trying to stay in their homes. They should be looking for alternative housing. There's been sufficient hotel rooms secured and remain under contract to make sure that anybody that's at risk has access to a hotel room. And although that may not be the ideal solution compared to being in your home, quite frankly, we're looking at days of 12 degrees and 10 degrees and 20 degrees, it's just an option that people should take advantage of if there's any risk whatsoever. We certainly are working, as the other communities are, to address some of the winterization issues associated with the travel trailers. My concern from the travel trailers from the beginning, are there, were an option that was necessary, given the fact we had a number of families impacted, but in the long term, the idea that you put folks in vehicles or spaces that were intended to be recreational and not necessarily in place for eight weeks or 10 weeks in a northeast winter, means we need to find reasons to get out of those properties as aggressively as possible. With that, I'm working with Mima, I've identified, sort of parted a little bit from the other two communities, and I'm asking Mima to aggressively work with Columbia Gas to relight 32 homes, the 32 families that are in the RVs, with the goal that by December 2nd would be, would be shutting down Grogan's Park. I think we're sophisticated enough to identify the needs of those folks, get them relit. If for some reason they can't, again, we're still shooting toward this December, the second date for everybody to be relit, if we had one or two folks who wouldn't get them in a close hotel. But let's start to decommission the travel trailer location, because I just think in the long term, as we see, we're putting plows across Grogan's field to create passageways, and we're insulating, you know, units that weren't intended. So we have communicated with Mima, did so several days ago, and said start to create a plan which closes us down in the next couple of weeks. I think some of the other locations may stay up and running, but I feel very comfortable with our position that way. As relates to Columbia Gas and support, I think...
Before you go on?
Yeah, sure.
So from today's report, we're seeing that there's a number of hotels available, hotels available within 20 miles. And is there any reason why we would not? I mean, it's supposed to be really, really cold over there.
Yes.
We all know those RVs are not designed for cold. They weren't designed to be here beyond today, right?
Plus and minus, yep.
Can, you know, is there any work being done to try to get those folks, those 32 families, out of those into one of these more, you know, weather-ready places, or whether...
Yeah, it's a great question. So it should be known that the travel trailers are warm and do have heat, but you're absolutely right. I think we all share the opinion that they weren't intended to be some kind of, when I say permanent, meaning multiple-week housing, they became real difficulty that way. As I understand it, these folks do have that option, if they choose today to move in that direction. For some folks, it's the proximity to their existing homes, it's the fact they're still in town, access to schools, which are a big deal compared to, you know, we know a fair amount of folks who were having this discussion yesterday about some families in a Burlington Hotel, and some folks said, geez, that seems far away, and others will say, geez, it's not so, it seems close. But I guess it depends on your family circumstance, how you feel about being that distance away. So they have that option, we can reinforce that option to folks absolutely. We share the feeling, though, that the goal needs to get folks out of recreational, out of the travel trailers and into some other kind of housing. And so I'll reemphasize that if they need to, they can communicate with those folks individually and move them. We're finding more of the closer hotels are opening up as people are being relit, which is, which is a real positive. So we'll, I'll make an outreach tomorrow to make sure that that's being reinforced with folks, so if they want to take advantage of that option, they can. They've instituted more temporary heat throughout the community, seen more of these generator-style units, we're pumping heat into any place where there's been a risk. As the board knows, we did a door-to-door outreach with the fire department, a community services person, elder affairs, to reach more than 200 folks over the age of 70 that would have been impacted. It was very productive for any number of reasons, gives people direct contact. We are producing, you know, reams of paper, and if there, whatever the right analogy is for social media, we're doing the same. But at the same time, sometimes you just need to go to a door, knock on a door, and find out what the response is. We've got some good feedback to make sure that we're communicating properly going forward. Located a couple of families at risk that were able to deal with problems. We've done the same thing this week with families that have had newborns, so we looked at our own internal data, found out with cases where there have been newborns in the last six to eight months, and went door-to-door to those houses as well to make sure that there was some, that folks knew we were around and available if necessary. And I think that was a positive outreach initiative as well. And so we'll continue to do that as we move forward. Again, the hope is that we'll see the relights on this sort of alternative phase, where we'll do the repair through December 2nd, and then there'll be a fair amount of appliance work through December 16th. And then when, I don't know what phase we want to call it, but in essence, we, we're going to take this giant step back for the winter and remobilize, watch Columbia Gas remobilize as they begin the repair, the replacement process of all the appliances they may have repaired. That'll be several months into 2019. I have requested a contract of sorts be written and executed between Columbia Gas and every single impacted resident that's making its way through the paperwork channels here, not just Columbia Gas folks, but the various communities and the AG's office, and in the end, such a document will be executed, even if you've already seen work on your house, where there is a listed expectation of what Columbia's gas, Columbia Gas's role as responsibility is going to be. So as begins sort of this next spring phase, there'll be a written document between every impacted household and Columbia Gas, which we felt was particularly important. From a claims perspective, we filed an initial claim several weeks ago with the help of Finance Director Lynn Savage and Town Council. We will continue to file claims as information becomes available. We have substantial claims. They are, they're well into the six figures, and I would expect those to get well into the seven figures. Everything from direct costs, such as the engineering services to oversee all of the construction, which was invaluable, to quite frankly, a substantial portion of my time, which has been 100% spent on Columbia Gas-related matters, has been a pretty strong administrative impact on what happens here and in other buildings around town. So we're including that as part of our cost recovery, and we expect that we'll continue to invest the time we have over the last two-plus months, or at least one more month, before we get to a safer spot. The Thanksgiving initiative, which started first as large-scale congregate meals, has turned out to be a huge success. We felt like a better opportunity for North End of a residents was preparing meals and letting them decide if they were going to have them at their home or relatives' homes, or just take them with them somewhere else. And so we promoted the initiative to have meals made, went through a couple of versions of that, Columbia Gas, the governor's office, and others, and finally came up with a plan, which is this plan that's being supported by Tuscan Kitchen, who's producing nearly 20,000 meals. If you've seen some of the data on that, it's turned out that the sort of, the prepared meal has been the dominant thing, and nearly 16,000 of those meals have been requested, which is fantastic. Far less support for the congregate-style meals. I think the last numbers I saw, it was 20 people signed up in Andover, and they had closed one of the, you know, location sites, but one of them will continue to operate in Lawrence. So I think the approach of going, having people being able to pick up a warm meal is really great, and we've had nearly 2,400 meal requests. Those be filled in two waves, beginning on Thanksgiving Day. Some folks have asked if they can help distribute those. The Tuscan Kitchen says they have it covered, they'll take care of it.
What's logistics of it? Do the folks have to go to Tuscan Kitchen?
No, they're going to, there's going to be, the First and Main will have a vehicle parked there, and they'll come in, they'll, they've already been assigned a time, and so if you're...
It's like 11 to 12, and then there's another shift that might be what?
One to three.
One to three, something like that.
And so if you signed up, if you reserve near the 11 to 12, you show up in that range, and you'll be given a meal. If it was something where you have a family of six, and they're really designed for four, you can order two. There'd be, you know, we're not looking for licenses, or what I, one of the things that was important to us, I don't want to, you know, let's not make this into, show your license, count your kids, if someone wants a meal, just...
Is that what really related to it?
Give them the food. So that seems to have gone well, and we'll see how that proceeds into Thanksgiving, which I think is a positive initiative. Parted ways, again, I think what we've done really effectively is worked with the other two communities on a lot of initiatives, because we felt that partnering has given us a strength that we otherwise wouldn't have. There, doesn't mean we always agree, and I think one of the differences as well is my position that I've told them not to work on Thanksgiving. That's a little bit of a departure from, I think, Lawrence specifically, and my position was, my concern has been for several weeks, productivity. I haven't seen the pro- I haven't seen the productivity I would have liked. We get some substantial data and just sometimes you're putting a lot of people in a space and we're not getting the return that we historically have. I think sending someone into someone's house where they're getting paid enough on Thanksgiving means we're going to get a less productive employee, probably less of those employees. And then I'm going to ask a resident to stay home. And if on that day, when they start, when that person or that group starts, if before they leave that house isn't relit, they're going to be pretty damn disappointed that they spent the whole day in the house with strangers and not getting the house rebuilt. So I'd rather have the folks stay home. I'd rather people go off and do whatever they're going to do and have the contracted libraries show up on Friday, ready to go and work their normal 10 or 12 hours and do what they can. I don't think it's substantially changing anything. I think we would have gotten very little done during the Thanksgiving Day. So that's the approach we've taken on that, and I think, I think the results will end up bearing that out. So we, we were at about 42% at the time we were raising concerns. As I mentioned at the business, at the beginning, we're at 64% today, and I think we'll, we'll get where we need to be. It should be noted that we're 94% complete and relit on other commercial enterprises of 155 businesses and other commercial-related entities. Where 94% of those businesses are relit. And so we're going to get to 100% fairly quickly. The hope is that will be the case five or days or so prior to the residential relights. And we're, you know, pretty happy to see those. Privately, if you can say that in a public meeting, we are aggressively working to the three communities to secure additional funding, to reinvest in the businesses in a way that that brings direct dollars to them as opposed to loan funds in other ways. There'll be more to follow on that. Our expectation is we would like to market, brand and emphasize the benefits of coming here to North Endover to buy and shop in North Endover. We think that, that folks are paying attention to what's going on, but folks also may believe that these businesses aren't operating, and we need to find a way to directly invest dollars back into those local businesses. We think we're able to do that and we are continuing to communicate with those folks who may fund that initiative. It'll be a pretty aggressive initiative and I'm hoping we have more to follow on that in the next couple of days. So I think it's really important that we start to spend money, not just us, but that others. We think that for people in other communities who would like to spend money in North Endover at our restaurants and other businesses, and we'd certainly encourage them to do that. We think that would be really important. So we're pursuing that initiative as well. General claims data, there's been nearly 40,000 claims filed. North Endover residents have claimed, sorry, that's overall calls, North Endover residents have filed 3,447 claims. Every seen claims checks in the amount of $13 million. 1,000 total claims checks paid by the company directly to the residents of the three businesses and residents of the three communities is north of $60 million, as we previously indicated. More than 430 million has been placed on the Columbia Gas and Ice Source balance sheet as a loss associated with this. Their insurance coverage is up to 800 million, and I would expect that at the end of the day, the total claims, the total losses as relates to this disaster will exceed a half a billion dollars when complete. So we continue to do what we need to do. This process will go on for a while, but I'm hoping by mid-December, our investment, the entity, the town's investment in, in focusing on this will diminish as, as more restorations take, take place.
You had mentioned the number 1,700 families. Was that, that still need to, is that more than Andover or is that-
There's 1,700 families currently at alternative housing. Yep.
That's what I thought.
Totally, yes.
I might have missed this, I'm going to read the rest of this, but did you mention the street work? Are we almost done with the street work now or, you know, there was what, 30 or 41 miles of pipe that needed to be replaced? Is that all done?
Yeah, there were 45 miles of pipe that needed to replace, total in all three communities. We had 13 miles of pipe and then connecting service mains to each and every house along the way. All of that work is complete. What's happening now on a spot occasion is they'll go back through, they'll test, they'll take devices they have to make sure that there are no leaks. It's common practice after restoration. Cases they find small leaks, they'll go back in the ground. You'll see that here or there, generally speaking. They'll fix the problem and they'll move on. They'll do the same thing with the service connections. But that is, project has been substantially complete on October 30th. You'll see a little bit of roadway work as they're trying to get sort of the roadways tied up. You'll see some street sweepers. As we're trying to get them to get any material that would have been put in the storm drain, out of the storm drains, get leaves out of the gutters as well, because it impacts, you know, our snow response.
Is that in all three communities it's done or is it just in-
All three communities, yep.
That made me just think of, there's been several postings on social media about people who've gotten flat tires because of debris that they claim was in the street from Columbia Gas. I don't know if that's necessarily been what it's been from, but I'm just curious if there's been-
I would struggle with that, is believing that because we're not, you don't, you don't put nails in the roadway. There's no screws in the pipes. So is it possible, there's a level of debris? We haven't historically found that when we've changed our own infrastructure.
Right.
So I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm just saying that it's-
Hasn't been seen as a huge amount.
Yeah.
So one bit of feedback I got this weekend was, it goes back to the communication issue. I think a lot of, I think we do a great job communicating, and I think that residents want to lean on each other, but everybody's dealing with their own unique situation. And so just because it worked one way at this particular house, doesn't mean it's going to work that same way for this house. And I know some residents have depended on Columbia Gas to hook up all of their appliances, while other residents have depended on contractors to come in, or private plumbers. What's the advice or direction that we can communicate to residents? Because the feedback I got this weekend was, one resident who got everything installed because the permits were pulled for the stove and the gas dryer, to be honest, actually in that case, it may not have been a gas dryer, but certainly the stove was, it was-
Sure.
Put in. And our inspectors went in, they inspected that, they inspected the furnace or boiler, whichever was in that particular home. And everything was good to go and that, that person is up and running. Another home two streets over had Columbia Gas come in, they, you know, inspected or they installed rather the furnace slash boiler. Our inspectors went in and said they were good to go, but that Columbia Gas was not allowed to install their dryer because they didn't want their gas dryer installed or their range because the permit hadn't been pulled. And so how do we get that, how do we get Columbia Gas to decide to pull the blanket permits? If we're going to a house, these are all the things that we're going to install? Or at least set an expectation prior to going in so that, in this particular residence case, she was annoyed with the town inspector. Why did the town inspector just let Columbia Gas do this? And well, if they didn't pull the permit, they didn't pull the permit, and it makes it look like we're obstructing progress when I know that we're not, but I mean, obviously here we are.
Sure. Well, let me address a couple of things associated with that because I'm aware of some of those posts. So first of all, to the community at large, and anybody who wants to communicate on social media, feel free. This is not your traditional process for changing an appliance, and what I mean by that is twofold. It is traditional in that you need a permit. It is not traditional because you're not coming to Town Hall to get that permit. Every permit by every plumber is being drawn out of central location because we have resources from 20 and 30 and 40 communities to draw the sufficient inspectors to do that work. So if you can imagine, we have like one plumbing inspector, Andover is one, we could never do this work. So we partnered in the mutual aid agreement between, you know, statewide to get folks here, which means every time any person needs a permit to do anything that's gas-related, so water heater, appliance, boiler, they need to get their permit out of the central location. If you're yourself-
Who is, who is "they"?
Any resident, any plumber. It's a plumber really.
The plumber would be the one to pull it.
So you go, the plumber gets the, the plumber pulls the permit. So if-
But if you're a resident that's using Columbia Gas-
If you're a resident using Columbia, Columbia Gas, it would be the same. But remember what Columbia Gas did. Columbia Gas made a change, we agreed to, that in order to get people on by December 2nd to reduce the number of days they're going to be in cold weather, we not only abandoned the November 19th date for everybody to get on because it wasn't realistic, we not only said it had to be replaced then and allowed for repair, but we also said, relight the boiler and hot water first and come back for the appliances later. Because if those folks, using the example you provided, even if they had the permit, they were not going to install the, say, dryer and stove, whether it's your example or another, because they're charged right now with getting heat and hot water up. And if they stop for those two devices, then more people are waiting for the heat longer. So the conscious decision when we abandoned the November 19th date was to focus only on heat and hot water when Columbia Gas is doing the work. And whether they had pulled the permit for all four appliances, using that example, or two, they were not going to put in those other two devices, devices that were there because in doing that, they were slowing how fast they could get to the next house to get heat on. The appliance range is post-December 2nd to December 16th where they will come back, even though it requires a whole separate visit and get the appliances in. And although for some residents, and I've read it, it's inefficient. It is inefficient because it's inefficient because we're choosing to be inefficient to make sure, it's inefficient for the person waiting for the appliances. It's not inefficient for the next person waiting for the heat.
I think the best way to explain it is you need to be in your home warm and be able to take showers. You can cook on the microwave, you can go out and get something.
That's, that's the decision.
That's, that's the thing, and I think if you ask anybody, would you rather be in a warm house with a hot shower or would you rather be able to cook? And they're going to say, no, I want the warm house with the hot shower because we can go get food or we can use the microwave.
In fairness, and I can believe you, but if your plumber is there or Columbia Gas is there, the resident says, this is inefficient. So understand what has to hap-
For that-
So wait, there is, there is, there is a follow-up. So that is completely logical and as we, I think it's incumbent upon us and the town that we communicate, this is why we're doing it this way. That being said, so the question was, why are some being, people being treated differently than others, where some people are having their gas ranges hooked up?
Because they hired their own plumber.
They hired their own plumber.
That was not the case in this particular, it was, it's literally, it's actually a public, public thread on the, on the Merrick Valley Gas page where this particular resident said everything was hooked up and it went through Columbia Gas.
I can give you, I'm not saying that person is being, is being sincere, but I can provide a lot of, I have folks giving out inspectors' telephone numbers thinking somehow that person can show up at their house because they, and they've shared that on social media when the realities are put out multiple times. Our inspectors are only inspecting houses if they've been assigned by the central location. And more often than not, it may not even be our inspector, it's a licensed plumbing inspector for the town. If we're going to coordinate services to be most responsive to get this done, giving out the local telephone number of the local person is like the worst thing, and that's been socialized, as they would say. So I think it needs to be understood that if that's happened, I can't speak to why it's happened in fairness, it shouldn't be the focusing on heat and hot water through December 2nd, then focusing on appliances. If you had a private plumber who caught, you bought you on appliances, you called your own plumber, that plumber still goes through the central location where all the, sort of everything's being coordinated out. They get their permit in advance, they hook up the devices, and as soon as they do that, they call for an inspection. Those inspections are happening. So we will inspect and install, we, the central inspection area will still install, inspect and install appliances on heat and hot water if the person pulled in a permit in advance. They'll go do that. So someone who self-mitigated, is the term we use, certainly could have their own plumber, pull a permit and have that inspected. If someone who's working through Columbia Gas, their focus right now is why do we heat and hot water, although I'm sure there's been exceptions to that. But everybody, let me give you one further example I think we're probably not found. I'm not saying it happens, but a fair amount of people go off to a large box store, they buy a gas appliance and feel somewhat comfortable, or a relative feels somewhat comfortable about, jeez, they unscrewed this gas feed, can't they just screw this gas feed together? I'm not saying it's happening, but I think common sense says it happens even when there's not a gas disaster. In those particular cases, when the inspector comes in to look at the permitted heat and hot water source, and they see there was no permit for one of the other appliances, that appliance will be disconnected, and that appliance will remain disconnected until a plumber is scheduled, pulls a permit, and that item is then reconnected and it's inspected properly. So some of the feedback I've seen is, I've had this, the plumbing inspector was here, how come he didn't just say okay to these two appliances? I've seen that one. And the answer is, he was in checking the heat and hot water. Yes, he noticed the two appliances, those didn't have a permit, and he basically could not say yes to those two appliances, nor could he give approval to relight the house because appliances were connected without the proper permitting process. So I think it is fair that residents are, I wouldn't even say confused, it's overwhelming. And I fully understand and respect the fact that if you're going through this, it must seem like no one's communicating well. I really, and we've read enough of it to recognize that. I would just say that if you're using Columbia Gas, their focus is heat and hot water. If you're using your own plumber for self-mitigation, make sure they have the permits, don't let them walk in the door until they have the permit for everything. And that all the permitting is working really, really, really efficiently because the state and the three executives have worked out a process. We have, coincidentally, are the paying agent. We've agreed to develop a single contract, they have to fill out our contract, we're paying everybody and we're paying everybody weekly to keep the process moving. And that process is working really well as long as people follow it. And that is to go to the central. So you can walk in here or call here or call a cell phone number, but you're not getting relit any faster unless you pull the permit through the central area and your plumber is communicating with that central area that they need to get an inspection. And the plumber must be present during the inspection. That's a requirement, and that's always a requirement. Hope that helped.
It does help. I mean, it helps quite a bit.
So take this five-minute-
Yeah, yeah.
... summary and-
Yeah, narrative only, no-
Narrative and just, you know, talk about social media, right? Literally answered probably a huge underlying questions that people have. So I think it's kind of on us and Cam to help push that message up because that, I think summarizes it very well. And lets people, I think, also understand that being part of a community means that there's a little bit of a trade-off. And, and that means we're trying to get everybody to kind of Maslow's hierarchy, get them for the first level of, you know, basics for life, and then we move up the hierarchy for what are the comforts? And, and that's really what we're focused on. I think if everybody buys into that and understands it, it's kind of a little easier to digest. Thank you, by the way, for also raising the heat, we can use that term, on it. I think it was appropriate in tone and timing and, and because if you don't, if you don't keep them focused on it, they don't see it through our eyes. And we have to make sure Columbia Gas sees it through our eyes, our residents' eyes, not from just kind of their little reports. So thank you, Andrew.
Other questions?
Any other questions on the gas?
It is kind of fun seeing the gippies and when they find, when people finally get their utilities and there's the extreme joy and excitement that just comes right through the laptop, so.
And people, I mean, I did not say it, but I've said it a few, that people are like extraordinary. So although we get the social media stuff, they're tolerant, they deal with it, they've been through a lot. I mean, there are a lot, there are 45% of our, 35% of our residents that were not yet lit. I mean, we're two and a half months into this, facing really cold weather on Thanksgiving, and people have been really, really good, really calm.
I agree.
I agree too.
We do need to bring normalcy to these families really quick, especially before the holidays, especially for the children. They cannot be, they can't be camping out anymore. It's, enough is enough.
Okay, moving on, last item is an update on major projects. So I had asked our town manager to give us just a, an overview of where we are on the senior center, the recreation complex and major roads projects. And I guess my feeling for putting this on the agenda was I would like to have a, you know, high-level Gantt chart that has like the major phases for these projects and milestones because I'm always talking to people in the community about these projects and I always get, when's that going to start? When's that going to be live? When's that, when, you know? And I, I need something to pull out and have handy.
You like charts, so we know that.
I like charts, I like a Gantt chart, I like a project plan.
And Gantt has two T's.
You know, we had a capital improvement, but the building improvement plan, that was huge for us to be able to convert that document all the time.
Absolutely.
And have regular reports.
We're closing back into that loop again, so we're working, let me give you the narrative version, but we are working on something that would be a sort of a combined document around these things. And as the capital plan is now less than thirty days from being released to you folks, we'll be, we'll be talking about more projects, which will be Facility Master Plan Two and all the... So, we're not stopping, so all that stuff goes with it. The thirty thousand view is that the senior center project, we have an architect, we have an OPM. We had a sort of kickoff meeting of sorts with Menko's Civil Engineer, with their sort of in-house planner, their staff, talking about how that's all going to be sort of coordinated. Our architect will now work on an updated Gantt chart or construction schedule, looking something like, you know, breaking ground in May, give or take. We're about a month, six weeks behind from our original plan. But that, that's just a function of being a little sidetracked and occupied with a few other things. But we're rolling out a plan that's, you know, we think is better than the original plan. It'll be the same size with the layout and related items, and we're going to begin doing that. I'd expect the planning board, you know, we have to go through the site plan process. That'll begin probably in January, or require a couple of meetings to get through that. So, we'll give you more specifics as time goes on, but we're building a senior center. And we're going to begin that process in May-ish. And I think you're still looking at about twelve to fifteen month construction cycle, and everything about what's going on is great. The architect we hired has built fifty senior centers. He's a preeminent person as it relates to senior centers in New England and beyond. Just have to ask him. And, and he's really great, and I think he'll provide the kind of insight and confidence within the group that this is what he does. And we can give you the laundry list of the projects he's been involved in. He's a very, very accomplished type of person.
What's the name of that?
No, his name is Catlin, John Catlin, it's Catlin and Petrovic is the name of the group. And so, we had eight responses of the, you know, eight responses to the architectural services. His skills, we had a lot of solid people, but his skills were sort of off the charts of everybody who did the review. Again, fifty, he's been involved in fifty senior centers, pretty dramatic stuff. The Ballfields project, the recreation complex project, whatever we want to call that project moving. I know that the committee has met some additional times, you know, close to two dozen different meetings to get that project underway. We had a meeting today, which we just made sure we're all talking the same language. Now, the expectation there again is that we're looking at a February bid frame with awarding contracts in March, and hitting the ground somewhere, let's say, April. And starting the work in April, and then running through just before winter. Although it's not a phased project, the work will, you know, they'll complete an aspect of the project through the end of two thousand and nineteen, and then begin again in April two thousand and twenty, and travel on to the end of two thousand and twenty, in which we'll have a completed project, which includes all of the amenities and assets and other things that we've talked about. It's, it remains, no question, in my opinion, the most exciting and transformative certain, certainly open space project, not only in North Andover, but our architects affirmed again today that, you know, they, they wander around shouting our praises to every community, and they roll out our plans and say, you want to do this? So, they're really, it's a really new project.
We should sell it. We should get some money.
We should get some reduction in the fees.
We need to raise some dollars.
Sure. So, we're on schedule for that, we're just about, sort of, everything seems to be lining well. No, nothing, you know, the committee has sort of teed us up to get ready and go. You know, again, on the timeline that we generally expected, so it all lines up pretty well for that.
When we got to bid in February for that, will we have an idea of what would come, what would be constructed in two thousand and nineteen versus two thousand and twenty, like?
Sure. We'll, we're going to lead them down that road a little bit, because you can't leave it completely open-ended. But these will be large-scale site contractors, not the smaller folks, this is a big deal, a big project. One of the things that wasn't completed in our conversation today is it's possible the entire sort of area drainage may need to be done at once. But generally feeling, the feeling is you probably don't need to do that, and you're probably working from what I refer to as the back of the site toward the front of the site. So, from the middle school parking lot back toward one twenty-five is probably the order of things. Usually like to work your way off the site. And so, likely to be, you know, everything from sort of softball and soccer on the backside with the bocce courts and the improvements to the parking lot off the Atkinson side, all the way through a portion of the parking lot, the middle school parking lot, and phase two being the baseball field, the park, playgrounds, and that kind of thing. That's a likely sort of staging of the project, depending upon what happens in terms of timing. The more they can get in the ground, the, they keep on going. It's not like they have to stop. So, if they get more done in that particular phase, our goal is to get some of the assets up and operating, you know, so that they're usable, some, some part of it usable by nineteen, and then all usable at some time during twenty. So, that's right around the path that we talked about, and everything seems to be moving in the right direction. Everybody remains excited about that. And again, the program is the program. We have a couple of tweaks here and there about managing some parking spaces, but the program's the program.
So, Andrew, I just, I know one component of this was private fundraising. And I don't know if I've missed it, but I haven't seen much on that, do you? Where is that?
Yeah, that, that really needs to be private fundraising. So, what I've done is given some general instruction to the folks that look like they'll be involved in coordinating those things. Again, they can use the construction schedule timing to understand when their funding would be necessary, which is most likely near the end of the two thousand and twenty phase, because we don't have to use their funding first. Those, those folks need to, you know, start to, you know, they've had some meetings in that regard, but I haven't, I haven't seen that kind of, you know, anything substantial. But I know that there's been conversations in some meetings about how that would work.
And I know people are really committed to it and want to do it. I can just say, just from experience with the YMCA, it took a lot longer, and it was a lot bigger hill, just because there's a lot on people's plates. And just, just leave it like that. It's not because people don't want to support it, but I think we were all surprised at kind of what it took.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I, I would hope, and if there's anything that, that we could do or support the subcommittee on to, to get that moving, because it just, it just takes longer.
Yeah, the interesting thing is, private fundraising is something we can't do.
Right.
Right? So, if you, as individuals, have an interest to communicate with those folks, my guess is that Rick Green, where he's not employed, will sort of retool a little bit that way, as will Terry Holland, amongst others, if you want to connect with them and offer your services and figure that out. We have to, we have to be cautious to, that I can't actively participate in fundraising on a public project. So, so if others want to engage in that regard, I certainly think things, people are talking about it and working on it, but I certainly encourage anybody who wants to do that to sort of begin that process. And the good news, I guess, is you're going to see some construction coming off next spring, and sometimes in development-related issues and in fundraising-related issues, seeing the product coming out of the ground really helps jumpstart that issue, which is helpful as well. Roadway project.
Sorry, before you move off, I know I said this in the last meeting, but I'm probably going to continue to say it every meeting. I just feel like public, communication with the public on these projects is going to be, is just so important, and having people understand and have the right expectations as to what's going to happen when, and when to give their input, and whatever. And I, we had talked about this public liaison or, you know, role or responsibility that needs to be filled. So, in addition to the Gantt chart, can we have some insight on communication plan? Or maybe it's too early for a communication plan, but who's going to be responsible, at least, for communicating? Because I feel like...
I'm going to get to that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a great point.
Enough.
Because they vary from project to project for different reasons. But I, I will conclude with that. The third item, the roadway specifically, the MassDOT project is due to be bid late this fall. I'm waiting for an update to see if they actually did that with the work to begin in the spring. So, that's what I'm waiting to hear, if they in fact, you know, the funding exists, and all the conversations have generally, you know, wound down to a certain extent. So, I'm waiting to hear if the MassDOT folks have put that out to bid, because they were supposed to put that out to bid with some expectation that construction on the MassDOT project was to begin in the spring. I'll leave it as, as the spring. Yep, we have another fairly large project, which is a MassWorks grant project around the twelve fifty Sutton Street site. I would expect that will begin in the spring as well. So, that's on the other side of, not so Sutton, I'm sorry, twelve fifty Osgood. I apologize, I've lost my mind. Is there twelve fifty Sutton? There's no twelve fifty Sutton.
Probably.
No, no, pretty high. Twelve, twelve fifty Osgood site, sorry.
There's a lot of airport in between.
It's a big space. The twelve fifty Osgood site, that's a MassWorks grant, two point seven million, adding sidewalks, that kind of stuff is, is due to begin. Again, it'll happen aggressively beginning mid-spring next year, so a pretty big roadway project. There's, there's going to be a lot happening.
Yeah, there is.
So, to the communication point, let me sort of talk about that to a certain extent. The MassDOT project is a MassDOT project, and so, we're going to direct all questions to MassDOT. The twelve fifty Osgood project is a MassDOT-funded grant project that we are bidding and overseeing, and that will either be Jan Borgesi or Jim Stanford being the primary contact on that. As it relates to senior center project, I've asked Megan to coordinate and drive that project, obviously with others involved, but be the primary point of contact. So, as the residents have questions, as the town has questions, it's clear who's, you know, sort of on that. We have other staff participating as well, by the way, but Megan will be the lead in that. And in the Ballfields project, I've asked Denise to be that person. Laurie Berzloff will also be involved in that project, you know, with her infinite, infinite experience with playgrounds and related items, and we're doing a lot of those items. So, the two of them will work as the primary points of contact, outward communication to the public and communication with the board, because those are the really two biggies, right? They'll last for long periods of time, and they're going to spend between the two of them, you know, twenty-plus million dollars. So, those are, so those projects, Denise and Laurie on one, and Megan on the other will be the points of contact. Jim Stanford will handle the roadway project at twelve fifty Osgood. And then, all questions go to MassDOT on the other project. So, those are the primary points of contact.
Great, wonderful, thank you. You can expect to have rotating updates from these people on our subsequent meetings going forward.
Updated every meeting. Any other questions about projects that were involved in it? So, Facility Master Plan Two, the consulting phase, will be in the two thousand and twenty master plan with an expectation for funding what we assume to be at least four likely projects through the balance of the five-year plan. Those being three school elementary projects, which were defined in the needs assessment done two years ago, Franklin, Atkinson, and Kittredge, and fire station project.
So, the, the third thing, and maybe you mentioned this in a previous meeting, I, I missed it, but Trinity and Royal Crest. So, is there, where are they?
Yeah, they're slow, though.
What's the deal, man?
They're slow, yeah, that's a great question. As, as the community knows, the board knows, we've had, I can't say they've been on again, off again. They've been on again, but slow conversations with the development group. In fact, they came to a meeting talking about what they're doing.
Right.
They've done a lot of their legwork. They think a redevelopment of the Royal Crest site is doable, doable, doable. It's a big, big lift. You know, this is, you know, guessing quarter of a million to a half a billion dollars worth of construction. You know, it's a big site, eighty acres, lot going on, thing, you know, all kinds of exciting and interesting things. But with that, there's a lot of moving parts, and they would be coming back. We're hoping, they reached out to us and said, you know, we're going to meet with you soon and give you an update, and the update is not that we're going away. So, that's a good sign. But I see this as sort of a most generational type, you know, timeframe. But certainly could last over a ten-plus-year period as they start to sort of reinvent that site in a way that makes more sense for the community. So, they have not gone away.
Okay.
It's just, I'm relatively impatient, and they're not.
That's good. It works. Thank you.
Could I be given the five-year forecast next, next meeting?
Okay, if there's no more questions on the projects, we can, we have no old business or new business, on to town manager's report.
I yield the balance of my time, that's it, that's all I got. I have a date with Nicole.
Any other questions for Andrew? All right, any selectmen comments or updates? Just general announcements and other comments?
Other than, as we approach Thanksgiving, and it's obviously been a really difficult time for our community, North Andover, Andover, and Lawrence, but how do I say this without getting too emotional? I've never been more proud of my community, as the way people have pulled together and been kind to one another, and the way our first responders responded, I mean, mutual aid. And this is where I don't cry about my house, but I cry about how wonderful people are. And when we put that call out, send everybody, they came, and they came, and they came. So, in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'm just really thankful to everybody. It's really been a tough time, and for all of us, but I'm just really proud of the town, and our workers, and our staff, and just the community in general. So, with that, I say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Very nice sentiment. Anyone else?
For those people who want to keep their money local and help those businesses that are looking to recover, Small Business Saturday is this Saturday. And it's a great excuse to come downtown, down, down North Andover, because we have a Santa Parade coming, so...
And we do have, it's Small Business Saturday coming up as well, right? Doesn't that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that all syncs up really well for downtown, and that's, it's a great opportunity, a great excuse to get back down there and check out our ninety-four percent, and hopefully by then fifty, a hundred percent businesses that are back up. So...
Very much agree. All right, with that, any other comments?
How about a motion?
Yeah, all entertaining motions.
Second.
On favor.